This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Eau Claire School District School Board. I thank all of you in attendance here tonight and those that are listening online. The online opportunity is afforded us through our Board Docs format and a partnership with Chippewa Valley Community Television. We do this to offer the utmost transparency and opportunity for a high level of participation of our taxpayers and the people that participate in our district. And finally, I'd like to thank our district staff who are here tonight for their hard work they do for keeping the Eau Claire School District one of the finest in the state. We have a hashtag that says ECASD inspires and I as a board member always do a hashtag ECSD proud. So also, board members, thank you for being here tonight and your hard work that you give us all the time. So let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. And would you please roll call verification for a quorum?
Commissioner Duhax.
President.
Commissioner Fager.
President.
Commissioner Hambach Boyle.
Present.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Boo.
Here.
And Commissioner Torres is absent.
Okay, thank you. We start the evening always with our public forum. In each regular board meeting agenda, we provide 30 minutes time period for citizens to address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items. Not all school boards do this and we're proud to offer this to our constituents. The 30-minute time, we don't need to extend that tonight because I just have two people, but know those that are on my list here who I will call on. You have up to four minutes to address the board. We have, and we're not able to interchange with you, but we really do want to hear what you have to say. But we don't hear personal complaints of school board personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. We do that in a different way. So the first person on my list is Jessica Smith. Please state your name and your address, please. Hi, Jessica.
Jessica Smith, 304 Le Mans Lane, Eau Claire. And I just, first of all, I want to say you all have a tough job and I do appreciate what you do. And, you know, I definitely wouldn't want you to tell me how to do my job and so I feel like some of us have been telling you how to do your job. One of the hot topics, I guess, is the boundary change issue, which a lot of people, I think, felt they were kind of blindsided by. They didn't know about it. I didn't know about it. You know, I felt like there should have been more public notice or, you know, notice to the affected families. So, you know, that's the only thing I would fault you on and I would thank you that you at least have this forum where you can hear our comments. So I, you know, I guess I'm speaking for one of the affected neighborhoods that would be affected by the proposed change and apparently would probably mean that the kids in our neighborhood would go to North versus Memorial High School at this point. And, you know, when I am looking through all these issues and all of the things I've read and all of the comments I've heard, you know, I kind of feel like it boils down to the fact that we're not upset, you know, about there needing to be a change. If there needs to be a change, that's, then you need to go forward with that. It's not a question of which high school is better than the other. You know, I don't, I think some people might feel that way. I don't feel that way. My whole, basically, my whole statement that I want to make, and I'm speaking for the families that have middle schoolers in our neighborhood. So a lot of the middle schooler families don't want to speak because they're afraid of discrimination. What happens to my child if I speak out about this and then they end up at North? Are they going to be discriminated against for sports and, you know, whoever might be here that's involved? You know, where I spoke out and now, you know, I don't want my child to suffer for that. I'm willing to speak out because I hope that there wouldn't be that kind of discrimination. But my whole, my whole statement that I want to make is that I believe and I feel that middle school students now, so the ones going into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade now, should be allowed to choose which high school they go to if the change goes through. So that means, because they are, you know, they already are kind of on that track. They might have already been in feeder sports. They might have already, you know, had activities that they kind of been planning on. They've already identified with their high school. So those kids, I feel like, and I have heard from the kids, they are upset by it. They're unsure of what could happen. Obviously, parents would help them, you know, whatever would happen. But, you know, I feel like that's a provision that could be made. So that's what I'm asking for, is that middle school students could choose. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. The second person on our list is Celeste Roos. Did I say that right?
Almost.
You, you need to correct me when you get up here so we say it right.
So my name is Celeste Roos and I'm the Health Promotion Manager over at Group Health Cooperative. I do not currently have any children. However, I was a volunteer at the Real Life Academy, which is where I was introduced to some of the students. And I am here to talk about dress code. So when the students from the various high schools in the area started coming into the room, I was a little bit shocked to see the clothing that the girls were allowed to wear to school. So much so that after leaving the event, my objective was to write a letter to you guys encouraging more strict enforcement of the dress code. But I went home, looked it up online, and was kind of surprised to find out there is actually no mention of how long appropriate clothing should be. So to give you guys a feel for what I saw when I was at this event, where from what I understand, the girls were, and the boys too, were encouraged to dress up. Of the girls who chose to wear what I would very loosely define as a knee-length skirt or dress, 90% of them were at least six inches or more above the knee. There were four to five girls there whose dresses were so short, the only way I can even define it is that it was a skirt where they, I mean, a shirt where they just forgot to wear pants that day. I'm not sure how things like that are allowed in school anymore. Maybe I'm just older than I realize. But I do not feel that the clothing choices foster an environment where students can focus on the individual, on their individual growth and learning. I know that for myself, as an adult, I was extremely distracted while I was participating in the Real Life Academy because of what I saw and I was only with these kids for three hours. I can only imagine the toll that that takes when students are around it all day, every day. I'd like to encourage the board to consider adopting a length requirement for the students and to quote from my alma mater's current dress code, which is also the home from our old friend Eddie Lacy. "Shorts, skirts, or dresses must reach the top of the kneecap." That might be a little bit old fashioned, but I think for my personal definition, anything two to three inches above the knee might be okay. It's also the dress code that I have to use at work. And if I am 6'1", I can find dresses that are long enough. Anybody can find dresses that are long enough. So help our young adults learn to dress for success so that they can continue to be productive in the classroom. Thanks.
Thanks, Celeste. And that concludes our public forum tonight and that takes us to our board administrative reports. And we start with Dr. Mary Ann Hardbeck's superintendent report. Hi, Mary Ann.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events, starting with our July 11th LEAP Committee meeting, which will be here at the Administration Building at 4:00 p.m. Then on July 24th, we will have Policy and Governance Committee meeting and that will begin at 8:45 a.m. in the Administration Building, followed that evening by the school board meeting. It's a reminder to everyone that in July, we only have one school board meeting and that meeting is on July 24th. Tonight is kind of a special night for us in that we have a number of schools that have received recognition from the Wisconsin RTI Center and the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. And they've received these awards for implementing a culturally responsive, multi-level system of support for improved student outcomes, thereby creating a system that meets the needs of all students. As many of you know, PBIS is our framework for implementing our goals toward nurturing the social and emotional development of students. And it is intended to help students develop skills of successful adults and to promote a positive, caring, and nurturing climate within the school and within our school district. And this aligns with our school board goal number one and our priority 2.1, which is maintaining a safe and supportive learning environment. And 2.2, providing experiences and instruction that address the needs and growth of the whole child. So we have a number of awards and first of all, let me describe the levels of the awards. We have a number of bronze winners. This means that they have been at full implementation of PBIS, that they have fidelity in one content area at the universal level, and tier one for at least one year. And at silver, we have full implementation with fidelity in one content area at the universal level, tier one for at least two years, and at selected levels for tier two for at least one year. So I, I'm, I can see a number of principals and I know that they may have brought representatives with them to the meeting. So as I go through the names of the schools, I'm going to ask the principal to stand, if you're here, and any of your representatives that you have, and then I'm going to ask the audience that we hold our applause to the end. Okay? So our first silver, silver level winner is Sam Davey. And they received their silver, silver level for behavior. Yeah, I know. I know. The next one we have is Flynn. Do we have anybody here from Flynn? Okay. They also received a silver level and for behavior. Lake Shore, I think I saw some representatives here from Lake Shore. One silver level for behavior. Locust Lane. Okay, we have one person here. Two, really. Oh, you have to stand too. For behavior. Longfellow. Okay. And that's another silver level for behavior. Manns. There she is in the back. She's already standing. Silver level for behavior and a bronze level for reading. So two awards there. Montessori with bronze level for behavior. And again, they're standing in the back, so already you can, you can see them. North Woods, a bronze level for behavior. Putnam Heights with a bronze level for behavior. Robbins, standing in the back, silver level for behavior. Roosevelt. Yeah, okay. Bronze level for behavior. Bronze level for behavior. DeLonge. Bronze level for behavior. South has a silver level for behavior. And, there she is. And Memorial has a bronze level for behavior. So let's congratulate them. Let's stand board. And I'll just say that this is quite a distinction for each of the schools and also for the district. Certainly not all schools in Wisconsin receive these designations and not all schools in Eau Claire receive these designations. So we're very proud of you and thank you for your work in furthering not only PBIS but our strategic plan. And then I just have one other thing to say. And, you know, on behalf of the staff, we want to thank Dr. Jennifer Fager for her service to the school board. And we congratulate you on your new position. I think Michigan's gain is our loss. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Dr. Hardbeck. Next is the president's report. I'll try to keep this short. Woke up this morning to find us on the front page of the paper for our math curriculum thanks to Liz Doams, our leader Telegram education reporter. Nice, nice, well, well done for digging into our agenda and, and really doing a report on something that we are going to present tonight on the mathematical literacy and supportive environment, learning environment. So that's later on our agenda. I wanted to start with a quick minute video. Today marks June, Juneteenth. Not a lot of people probably think about this, but I want to call attention to all those here and listening online, the significance of June 19th. It is a major milestone for America and I have a short video for everyone so you can feel the significance. Thanks, Patty. People can pull that up on YouTube. It's just a short minute video, but just wanted people to be aware. Additionally, last Friday Catherine and I attended, along with Abby and Jim, the Legislative Chamber's Eggs and Issues Event. School funding was brought up with three possible helps generated from the people that were there, our legislators that were represented there. The Assembly is presently putting together help for rural schools that consistently spend below $98 to $100 per student. They did a press conference here about a week ago relative to this new idea of how to fund schools. The money needed to fix this would be taken from all other schools that were above the $9800. So for Eau Claire, that fix for this would be approximately in a million dollar loss to our budget. Another thing, another idea was brought up by the legislator, legislate, one of the legislators was an alternative state budget. And it could, given where they spend the money in the budget, they could equitably fund Tony Evers Fair Funding Formula. It's just how the money's being spent. Finally, a third option, which I had not heard about prior either, was to keep the governor's budget, which would be the $200 per pupil the first year and the $204 the second year of the biennial budget per pupil, and use the state budget to help the rural districts. And I just noted today that that is being passed around. So that was good to hear. So Joe's going to talk specifically about some other things that have to do referendum bills tonight as our legislative chair. Also, board, I think I sent you an email about the Wisconsin Public Education Summer Summit on August 9th in Lake Mills. So is everybody getting their WPEN emails?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So you'll see some of that coming through. I have already signed up and we'll get a van, so I don't want to really go alone. So somebody better come with me, okay? Also, I want to thank the two candidates in our audience tonight who have submitted their names for our vacancy when Jennifer moves on to Michigan. And they're in our audience today. I'm just going to introduce them. Joshua Clements, are you out there? Could you stand, please? Thanks, Joshua. And Lori Bicka. Thanks, Lori, for being here. And finally, I'd like Jennifer to stand. I can't thank you enough for your hard, hard work on board. I miss you. Your perspective and what you gave us to think about was amazing. And so it might have been a short time if you paid a big attention to what you did this year. I love you. I love you. I didn't sign it yet. Better give it back. I get nervous. I get nervous before meetings and I didn't check that, so thanks, Patty.
Then it makes me wonder if it's really legit.
Yeah, I'll sign it. I'll give it back to you.
It's void.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I knew I'd screw up somehow tonight. Onto school board committee reports. We didn't do them last time, so I would like to pull them up tonight and see if anyone has a committee report. First one, Budget Development Committee. Anyone would like to give a report for the Budget Development Committee?
Not much.
Not much? Okay. Demographic trends, we're going to talk about that later. Joint Commission, we haven't met. LEAP Committee did, and so I do have a little bit on that one. Let me get to my pages here. We have been meeting on refining our expectations through our charter that we are working on, and our next meeting is July 11th from 4 to 6. I also attended our head start, I'm on that committee as far as their policy council. And this was exciting, so I wanted to share this with the board. They went through their program growth, was shared using their teaching strategies gold and their DEVRO Early Childhood Assessment, the DECA, for growth in certain protective factors in children. I think it looks at self-regulation, attachment, and initiative. Lots of neat gains there. They also are using PALS as far as their phonological awareness. But they did end the year, and this is what I thought was cool, with almost 100% of the parents attending and they, they, they put rocks in a jar so that they could put names and that they could touch base when these kids were seniors and ready to graduate. So then I was trying to figure out, you know, when that would be, which would be, it would be 203031. And then I figured out how old I would be and that would not, okay. I think it's a neat tradition that they're starting and they're going to try to follow up and see where their kids are when they're graduating from high school. June 2nd was also their day that they did their transition to K-Day with their 4K teachers and all the 4K and K teachers and the principals and interventionists came together to exchange information and data concerning the kindergartners that they would be receiving in their schools. So I thought that was pretty cool, but I didn't think it was how old I'm going to be in 2031. Anyway, so that's my report. That takes us, Policy and Governance, Joe? We didn't, we really don't have. Okay. We did, for the first time in a very long time. The next thing on our agenda is legislative update. Joe, that's you.
Good evening, everyone. I have quite a bit of information for you. The, there are three referendum restriction bills, or at least three major ones that are circulating in the Capitol right now. Later in this meeting, you'll see the board signing three different resolutions, taking positions on legislative matters. One of them is on these bills because of the real impact that they would have on districts, including ours. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about them. Assembly Bill 282 would prohibit a school board in a unified district from voting on a resolution to exceed a school district's revenue limit at a school board meeting that is not a regularly scheduled monthly meeting. And it would further provide that the electors of common and unified school districts may vote upon an initial resolution to raise money through a bond issue only at the annual meeting. That doesn't impact us, but it's important to know. The other would be, that's kind of a minor one, restricts the scheduling of school district referendums to only be held on the dates of spring and fall general elections, so it limits the opportunity to hold a special election. But the Assembly Bill 268 is the one that could really harm us as a school district. And I just spoke to the news station about it a little bit earlier today. Assembly Bill 268 would eliminate recurring referendums to exceed revenue limits. Recurring referendums are permanent referendums that are passed. It would limit their existence and it would actually turn all current recurring referendums into non-recurring referendum. And it would limit their duration to five years, no matter what the duration was. What that would also mean is that it would limit the duration of successful, non-recurring, temporary operating referendums to five years as well. So that would shave the referendum that we just passed in Eau Claire in November, which was a 15-year, that would shave it to five years. That means that our district could lose $52.7 million out of that referendum. So this is very real. It's very scary. They just had their day in the committee last week and WASB was there, the School Boards Association, to testify along with school board members. The, the five-year clock would begin ticking in the year the bill, if enacted as a new law is published. So this is very scary. The cliff effect that it would have on districts, big and small, would be tremendous. And bear in mind that in November, hundreds of school districts and their voters approved questions on their ballot. Hundreds of communities opted to raise their own taxes to support their public schools. That's not a decision people make lightly, but it's a very important power for local communities to have. So please take some time this week, if you can tomorrow, to go on the state legislature website, call your representatives directly, and also you can easily find the Assembly Education Committee tab. And send, you can send an email to the whole committee right from that site and you can also call their offices directly, the chair, vice chair, the other members. It is, it's very scary to me and it could be very damaging to districts. Restricting local control and flexibility means longer delays in meeting the immediate needs of students. And I think it's very important that we trust elected boards like this and, and the, and the experienced business managers and others who guide these decisions of what the questions should look like. And to also let local voters decide what is best for their local communities. So please do take time to call because this could cost our school district over $50 million. I can't stress this enough, how important it is to take a few minutes tomorrow, call folks up, send an email. This is really scary. So that's enough about that, though. I'm already going to have nightmares tonight about that. Chris talked a little bit about the budget. The Joint Finance Committee could meet this Thursday to vote on the K through 12 budget. We're hearing that Republican members of the Senate and Assembly are meeting tomorrow to meet, to try to reach a compromise. They have two competing education plans. Last week, the Assembly rolled out their new proposal, which would benefit some smaller districts, or I shouldn't say all smaller, but lower, lower spending districts. The plan in our case would cost us over $1 million. So bad news with that plan. We don't know what this plan is going to look like because they're hashing it out tomorrow, probably. So I'm sure we'll be getting more updates in the next 24 or 48 hours. But if an agreement is reached, the committee is likely to vote on the education budget this Thursday, June 22nd. I can't be there, but I know that people are trying to get mobilized and if it is on Thursday, get as many people as possible from across the state to actually show up at that meeting. Public comment is not allowed, but a pro-public presence could help remind lawmakers that public education advocates have made clear what our schools need from this budget and serve as a reminder that we've called for no last-minute shenanigans with policy items being inserted into the budget without public input. So stay tuned for updates. I'll try to put them on Facebook and I'll send it out to other board members so they can share it too, because it will happen before our next board meeting, I would expect. Finally, I want to share that I'm planning a phone bank about the budget. On Thursday evening, we'll be calling residents who live in districts of Joint Finance Committee members. And they, it kind of depends on when the vote is called, but I'm hoping that this will be good timing to hold that. It'll be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday. So if you'd like to be a part of that, please get in touch with me after this meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Luganbill. That moves us on to our consent resolution agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background information and materials on each item, and it's been discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion if none of the board members pull any of the items. So for clarification or comment, I, so I would like to entertain a motion to approve the following consent agenda, consent agenda items. The minutes of June 5th, 2017. The minutes of closed session, June 5th, 2017. The 2016-17 budgeted The 2016-17 budget adjustments. Payments of all bills in the amount of $6,188,391.36, and net payroll in the amount of $3,373,539.36 for the period of May 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2017. Gifts in the amount of $10,280.50 for the period of May 1st, 2017 through May 31st, 2017. The financial report for May 2017. Human Resources employment report. The resolution on leading on lead bill. Our resolution on voucher transparency bill. And the resolution opposing anti-local control school referendum restricting legislation. Can I get a motion, please? So moved by Commissioner Fager, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dux. Could we take a roll call vote, please, Patty?
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
Yes. I just want to make a comment that the resolutions will be passed through the board tonight for your signature, okay? So we can get our signature. We will also then share them with those that need to be shared, and hopefully get other districts to do the same. So that's what we've been trying to do with our resolutions. Okay, back to item 5.8. Commissioner Luganbill?
I pulled it.
Who pulled it? Oh, Charles, sorry.
I pulled that one out so that we can vote separately. I need to be abstaining from it.
Good, okay. Would someone like to move it, then?
I don't know.
From Commissioner Dux. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fager, roll call, please, Patty? Thanks, Charles.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Abstain.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
Yes. That moves us on to our individually considered resolutions. The first on our timeline is for boundary changes. Let me pull it up. I want to see. So, to recap, our demographic and trends committee presented their report to us a couple of meetings ago, and their recommendations. I had Patty run off a copy for everyone so that you could pull the recommendations page up if you would like to. We had a second meeting relative to a couple of options for us to think about for this meeting and for discussion. So what I'd like to do is, I've done lots of reading and going through things again prior to this meeting, so I share with the board that I'd kind of like to do a discussion first, and then have Mary Ann kind of talk about the options, and then we can see where we'll go from there, okay? So I spent some time today doing some talking points to bring some of the stuff back up so that we could kind of think about what was talked about, since our wonderful Demo Trends Committee gave their report and their information and their data. And, you know, I keep thinking that the final thing that we're really looking at is that we are going to provide easier access for North students, and we're going to provide more opportunities with Memorial students, kind of in a nutshell. I know at our last meeting, we had someone bring up the poverty piece, and that we had all Title I schools funneling into North. That's not necessarily true, but we don't have the definitive information on that, so I don't know if the board would want that in order to make your decision, okay? I know that our committee worked hard, that they've got the facts put together, and they've been very data-driven. We've been encouraged, you know, to either vote tonight or to kind of maybe take a vote down the road a bit. So, these are some of the questions that I had when I went through all the information again, and maybe if I do these, you can add yours to it. Mine was, did the committee take their decision to the community? Now, I know we had a pretty representative committee, and I know that the meetings were open meeting. I also know that people were invited from time to time, and the committee also presented with the parent advisory council. I know, though, that not every school was represented at PAC that night. I mean, we don't always have perfect attendance either. So I had that question. And was the information from, or who's, where is it where we talked about presenting then the information and the recommendations to the PTA/PTO meetings? I, oops, I just lost by, here we go. I also had a question about, did the principals in the buildings affected meet with their staff and families using the information provided by Demo and Trends Committee, or is that, should that happen somewhere else? Or did it already happen? Was the committee report sent out in the district update so that our staff and our staff were aware of it? I wasn't sure about if that should have happened or did happen. Or is that our job as a board to do, which would tell me that goes into the plan as we get ready to do this, or if we do this? Also, I had a concern. June and July are not the best months to take these votes, because our participation is down. I mean, Eric's not here, he's on an important mission over, I think he's in South America, isn't he? And in August, Aaron has this wonderful family commitment and tie to England, so he will be doing that as well, which is understandable. So, right? That's where you're going, yes, and you kind of have to do that, yeah. So, there were other specifics that were brought up too, that I had questions about. As we look at either a timeline for informational meetings, if we have informational meetings and there's lots of questions answered, then I started thinking about, the committee said, effective for present seventh graders at DeLong? What is the board or administration's transition plan with, you know, what would that look like? Is it incoming ninth graders, so that within nine months or a year, those kids would be the one transitioning? We haven't had that discussion as a board. I think that it said, use of the new boundary for incoming students, ninth grade with 12 to 15 months notice, and be ready to go for the 218, 19 school year. So that's the recommendation. So, I wanted to bring that up and say, how is that going to look in the transition? I wanted to know who the lead administrator on the transition plan would be, I wasn't quite sure on that, although we've talked about it. But, and lots of people are involved, and they're knowledgeable, and they're wonderful in putting this together. Who would be the point person within the administration when parents have questions over the summer? You know, as we build this transition, who would that contact person be? We don't always have everybody around. Would we have a tiered system so we would have more than one person knowing to connect to the community? So that was another question I had. Or if people are not able to come to the information sessions, where can they answer their questions? And I know we were going to build something on the website that they could answer questions, but wondering who was going to do all that. Then the other thing I had was, we had received as a board, I don't know if people remember, in our, I think it was in our packets, we had received from Mary Ann and Tim on suggested high school enrollment pathways and alternative school requests relative to transitioning as well. Did we have a discussion on mirroring what we had discussed about open enrollment, I'll go to North? There were other suggestions on that we had about siblings. Would this be the format we go by? I wasn't sure about that either, as a board member, so that was kind of hanging out there. So my question was, does this need to be aligned with our recent decision on open enrollment? And what would the alternate enrollment request look like, and who would qualify? We haven't really had that discussion either, and I know that's going to be the first question we're asked in information sessions, and we're like, I don't know, you know? So, and here are my talking points. I just want to say this to the board, and this is just me talking as one board member. And I asked often through our referendum why the community was so quiet when we were asking them to raise their property taxes. And I learned that when you don't leave any rock unturned to bring the information to your community, it is appreciated that the decision and need was explored together with facts and information from our amazing committee work ahead of time. I think putting, I truly feel that our next step is to present the information with a well-defined transition plan, answering all the questions that will be asked of us, instead of saying, well, I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to get back to you. I don't necessarily want to slow down the process, but I have firsthand experience about spending quality time on the front end of certain decisions. It pays off in the end, especially if it has to do with families and their children. Again, I agree that some decisions need to be made, and that is the end of it, but right now, with my expertise and experience working with families my whole life, I need to spend, I feel we need to spend the additional time sharing the information and answering questions. That's just where I'm coming from. It's about numbers, geography, data, that's all really important things, and we will share that, and glad we have that information. But for me, it's about families, children, neighborhoods, which speaks more about the whole child and who we are as a district, and a place people can trust. Over and over, we build for learning to take place. I'm looking at this as a community connection, building understanding for what the board has to do. It's been a long time coming to have this conversation. It's a hard one, but we're going to make this decision. I also think we have additional questions to answer about the transition as I specified above, okay? I want to end with the promise of my total participation in getting this done over the next several months, and that a vote will be taken. It might seem that this is all the board has to deal with, but you all need to know that we have mammoth legislation happening right now, that we stay on top of daily. We are working on a definitive governance structure with frequent new board members, as we have replaced three board members since I became president on the board a little over a year ago. We are not going to push the boundary issue down the road, so you can be assured it's going to be, come to a conclusion, but also want to vote when we have a full board here, which won't happen until September. I'm only one board member of seven, but feel that anytime you build in and expand deliberative dialogue into a difficult decision, we are all better off with a higher standard of understanding, which in turn keeps the trust of our taxpayers. So I'll open it up for other comments.
So, before you start your comments, let's see if we can answer some of these questions that you've asked. And I'll ask Jim Schmidt to talk about the division of Title I schools between North and Memorial attendance areas, because that was one thing that was brought up in the last public comment.
Yep, I'm just pulling up the map right now. Did you want to pull up a map of the district while we go through this, or no?
We could pull up a map, or you could just tell us, because I think if you just cite the Title I schools and what attendance area they're in, the board can take a few notes, and that will...
Just got to make sure I don't miss one here. So in the Memorial District, right, Memorial Zone, right now we have Flynn, Mans, you're quizzing me, I'm going to go over to the North side. We have Sherman, which of course splits eventually when you get to high school. Locust Lane. And then I skipped one for Memorial, which was Lake Shore. With the change you're going to make, so right now you have three and three, and then you split Sherman, and then the Lake Shore is going to end up in Sherman, so you end up with three and a half, three and a half, and you're going to end up with the shift of going 5-2.
And then with the middle schools, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yep, so the middle schools, two of our middle schools are title schools, which is DeLong and North Star. And of course, now, most of DeLong, that is title, will now be going to North, so really both title middle schools will be going to North High School, whereas right now you have, so North Star is about five eighths, sorry for the fraction, about five eighths the size of DeLong. And so if you take DeLong, and half and half, you know, that about half and half goes to each school, or goes to each, goes to North and half goes to Memorial, but a higher percentage of that is really title going to North. So if you split those title students, you already have more going, and you're really going to be moving all of those now to North. So all the title students in those two middle schools would be shifted to North.
So, thank you for doing that.
Sorry for the, wasn't 100% ready for you, but I got there.
In terms of the demographic trends and facilities, Planning Committee taking their plan to the community, they did have an information session where they presented their findings and their recommendations to PAC, and they asked at the PAC meeting for feedback on their presentation. And a number of board members were, attended that meeting, as well as some community members and many of our principals. At that point, it was a, it was a proposal for the board to consider. I don't think at that point, we felt as an administration, that we could take it to the PTAs or to the staffs, because we didn't know what we were taking. You know, we didn't know if we were taking a decision, or if we were, you know, just telling them to vote. However, to your question about whether or not it was in the district update, it probably was not highlighted in the district update, but we always send the minutes of the board meetings out in the district update. So it was available to those who might be interested. I think your point about not having a full board through the summer is one that we brought up last time, when we talked about, summer is a time when people kind of scatter, whether they go on vacation, or, you know, they're just not into the school mindset. So, that probably is a consideration for the board to consider, because it not only affects families, but it also affects staff. In terms of a transition plan, the transition plan, I mean, there are a number of activities that will have to take place, but it's really going to depend on the vote that you take about when the implementation comes, because if a vote to take the rising seventh graders for this year will look very different from a plan that would take, starting with maybe fifth graders, who are in elementary school. That would just, it would just be a different, it would have a different look and feel to it. So, a lot of the activities would depend on the age groups of the students. And you're, I think you would have to take a vote on, at what grade level you're going to implement. In terms of a lead administrator on the transition, I mean, I think this would most likely be the superintendent, working closely with the board, but in terms of point people, those would have to be the principals of the schools involved, and we would have to include them in the planning for the transition plans, and also make sure that they're well-versed in all of the logistics of the plan. The website is already constructed. The only thing that's missing from that is the implementation details and the frequently asked questions, because we haven't had the frequently asked questions yet. And in terms of transitioning of siblings, that's, again, you would have to vote on that. That would have to be part of your implementation. So, Hope, I think I answered the questions that you asked.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hardbeck. Commissioner Fager?
So I thought I'd make my last meeting worthwhile, and when I signed on to be a member of the school board, I signed on to consider the benefit of all children in the district. Students who go to North High School, students who go to Memorial High School, students who go to every elementary or middle school in our community. And then, it was brought to my attention, that poster that's in the back of the room, the Equity poster. And... And I think that's probably the most significant piece that we need to consider when we're talking about this. First of all, we haven't voted on doing this. So that's the first vote, in my opinion, that needs to occur. We need to vote to change the boundaries. We have, we're in a really fortunate situation here in Eau Claire, that not a lot of school districts with multiple high schools and multiple schools can, can brag about. And that bragging point is that we have a level of excellence that is across all schools. And children in our district will benefit regardless. One of our goals is post-secondary success for all students, and we need to make sure that all students have that opportunity to be successful. And I firmly believe, because of the principals, the teachers, the staff, that regardless of where your children go to school, they will have the opportunity to be successful in post-secondary life, whatever they choose to do. I've been trying to keep, pay attention to, to some of the North High School successes. The, the, now, it's also important to note that I did not go to high school in, in Eau Claire. I moved here for a job, and I don't have the emotional attachments that some people have to some schools. I calculated on my fingers in the parking lot before I came inside how many years ago I was in high school, and I was frightened by that number.
So we've both been frightened tonight.
Yeah. But I didn't go to the same high school that my parents went to, or my grandparents went to. My nieces and nephew changed high schools, starting in ninth grade, and my niece graduated in the top 2% of her class, and then graduated college summa cum laude. And she did okay. So change doesn't need to affect everyone in, in, in a negative way. It can be a positive thing, and the positive way of looking at this depends on how we respond as community members, as parents, as teachers, as bus drivers, as cafeteria workers, as everyone that's included in the district. The more positive we are about this change, the more positive an experience the children I, I hope that we can take a vote tonight to move forward on an issue that's been discussed for at least five years, in my quick look back at the history of this committee. We need to vote on whether we're going to make these boundary changes. That's the first piece that we need to think about, in my opinion. The second piece that we need to think about is how to make this transition as smooth as possible for all children. And, and there's some really easy things you can do. Let's send the, let's send the North High School marching band to Sherman Elementary School, and hand out some T-shirts, and welcome them to the Dog Pound. I, I, I wouldn't be, Dog House, Dog Pound, sorry. Okay, didn't go to, see?
Not the bat, not the dog.
Yeah, Dog Pound, Dog House. Let's invite, okay. They can all be Huskies, and we can all be super excited about that. That's a positive way of looking at this, rather than the Chicken Little approach to change. And I realize change is a hard thing to do. I'm facing a major one here in two weeks. And there's lots to be done, but I think that everyone's sitting at this table and has the benefit of understanding that all children need to have an opportunity to be successful. But we've got to make some decisions, and we can talk around a topic for five or six years, but as long as, if we keep talking about this, that's all we're going to do. And we're notorious in, in education, that we plan to plan, and then we plan some more, rather than acting. And I think it's time to act, and then we can work on a transition plan that will help all children feel like they belong wherever they're going to be.
Thank you. Any other board members? Commissioner Duhigg?
Well, I appreciate all the questions that concern you, and they concern me as well. But I guess I, I feel we need to make the decision and then work on the details, not work on the details first, not knowing what the vote is. The vote comes first, then the planning, which a lot of planning has already taken place. We have, we have an outline, we have an idea of what we need to do. And so I don't think the community wants to sit around for three more months, wondering how we're going to vote. I don't want to think about that all summer, and wondering how you all are going to vote. I, I just feel like we need to make the, make the decision. And the more I thought about it, Commissioner Fager also had suggested something from the committee, that we look at our statistics at every census time to make sure that we're keeping up. And I've heard a couple of very hard things the last, a couple of weeks ago, that somebody's putting in 100 lots down on Highway 93. Really? And the school is the last to know? Our elementary schools are full on the south side. We have some room on the north side for elementary students. But what if somebody puts in this huge development on the south side? Eau Claire can only, you know, I, I told my late husband, who was on the city council, Eau Claire is landlocked. We have Altoona on the east, Hallie on the north. The only places to build are on the south side and the west side. So we do have a problem, and I think we need to get right at it. We want, Eau Claire is starting to grow like crazy. If you've seen the statistics, I think 500 people, new people moved in this year. That was in the Leader Telegram, I think it was. So I just, I feel like we need to be in the lead on infrastructure and what we're going to do with the schools. Maybe we need to be building a new elementary school somewhere. And we know we need to replace a couple of them. So I, I'm not worried, because I know what a good team we have here. And we will address all those issues, but I'd rather do it sooner than later.
Commissioner Luganbill?
I have some comments, but first I, I want to just ask, so I know where people are at with this, is that when we talk about we want to vote right now, and then have the, the planning later on, because we don't really have necessarily a plan in front of us. So is the, are we talking about voting on the two top proposals from the committee recommendations, talking about the, the new boundary lines, and then we're saying that in September, after the sessions, we would then vote on the specifics of it, in terms of when it happens, how it happens, how you deal with, how you work with, you know, whether it's sibling considerations or others, and then what the transition plan is? Are we saying that you'd separate it, and you'd vote on the proposal, kind of the shell of the proposal, and then the meat and the implementation, and when, and the how, in September? Is that what?
Matt? So I think your point is well-taken, and I think you would, it would be, if you were to vote tonight, say, to change the boundaries, it would be probably difficult for you as a board to determine the implement, implementation grade, and also, you know, determine the pathways in terms of siblings and that kind of thing. That might be something that you do want to discuss more at length and get more information about. You might also want to have some consideration of the information that Mr. Schmidt provided to you in terms of Title I schools. So, you know, I, I think your point is well-taken, and I, I see you having a series of votes. One to change the boundaries, one to establish the pathways for siblings and those who are with the alternate school requests, and also to the grade implementation.
So, okay, that's helpful for me. And that was kind of my main question. And, and I think when we talk about the importance of public input, I think if we are to hold a series of votes, and we have a planned vote, whether, and talking about the pathways and the transition planning, if you've had that after your public input and your opportunity for people to ask questions, that might make a lot more sense. But I do have some comments. I, I first, I, I want to thank the demographic trends and facility planning council. They, I know we ask, we thank them every time, and they deserve it every time. They put in some incredible work, and they're all volunteers, and they're all folks who responded, they're, they're either, they've been on the committee for a while, and we had a whole bunch more that applied through a Google Doc, and we appointed last year, at the start of the year. They spent their free evenings with us, and the committee really dug into the data, the numbers, and they're a bunch of nerds, and I love them. And I will say that...
I resemble that.
Yeah. And I will say that public input and communication is not one of the requirements of that committee. It was never asked of them. That is our responsibility as a board. So I don't want, I don't want it to be portrayed that the committee ignored the public. We never asked them to interface with the public. That is something that we have to own as a board, and that I'll talk about in a second. I know that there's a lot of emotion with this issue. I understand that. I went to North. My sister attends Memorial. I have three younger siblings, two still in the district, one at DeLong. I observe the inequities as a student in our district. I respect where everyone is coming from, and opposing views are okay. I hope that people don't feel like what was said tonight, that they'll be targeted if they speak up in any way, because we do want that input. We want to know how you feel, and we want you to know that, as a school board, we value your opinions. I first want to say that I am sorry if individuals feel blindsided by this. This is an issue that has been neglected for a long time, long time. I, I don't want it to come as a surprise ever again, and thankfully, our board is in a position to make sure it doesn't come as a surprise ever again. It's amazing to me that after 156 years of being a school district, or actually, no, no, more than, I don't know, 160, yeah, we just had the birthday and blew the candles, we have never had a boundary change or boundary review policy on our books in all that time. So one of the things that the Policy and Governance Committee, which I chair, will be looking at in this next year, is going to be just that. And a policy that reviews the boundaries on a regular basis, my, my personal inclination is that it would be aligned with the census. That would make the most sense for us, and save us money to do it. But that would be a way for us as a board to, to institutionalize this. It's something that the eighth-largest school district in the state should be looking at more than once every 55 years, high school boundaries. So what we do need is that policy tied to the census. I think one of the things that I, I just want to state publicly is we do need to be careful with the messaging of this. I don't want it to come across that we're writing off the concerns of people, just because we have the best data and the best information, which I think we do. But I don't want to write off the real concerns, that aren't necessarily always tied to statistics, but they're, they're, they're about the impact it will have on families. And will this be a rosy situation for everybody? No, it won't. But how we speak to each other, and how we talk to each other, is important, how we, how we carry ourselves as a district. And like Commissioner Fager said, how to use uplifting language, and, and really projecting that we are proud of all of our schools and all of our students. That will be very important for us, and I hope we'll rise to that challenge. Being a leader isn't always about doing what is popular. It's nice when the things we work on happen to also be popular. But it's important for us to do what is right at all times. And sometimes that is hard. To me, what is the most crucial is ensuring that all voices are heard at the right time, and ensuring that we're upholding the, the democratic values that make our community a great place, and, and define us as a public, a public body. So I do hope that we can make sure that this process is carried in a way that is as public as it gets, and as welcoming and friendly as it gets. We have an incredibly important opportunity here, to level the playing field for youth in our district. And let me be clear here, this will improve and balance the educational experiences for students at Memorial, just as it will for students at North. I just want us to do it the right way. So we have two options before us tonight, but I actually don't like either of them, really. One was to vote without public information sessions, right now. One is to vote after public information sessions. To me, the, the best route moving forward would be to vote on, basically, if, if everybody has our packet, which they don't, but it's, it's the proposal for all students north and west of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers, oh, I, I was talking to the audience, I didn't know if they had it. The, my, what I would recommend is that we approve those two proposals, that students north and west of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers attend North High School, and students south and east of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers attend Memorial High School. I support that proposal. And I, I, I don't think we necessarily need input any further on the shell of what that proposal at its core is. So I support moving forward with that. What I would then support is for the, the third, the three other bullets, when we talk about monitoring things, the transition plan, the pathways, how we will utilize the new boundary, I would support us addressing those and voting on those as an individually-considered resolution at our first meeting in September, after people have had several months to plan. And it's not that long of a time period. But that would be what I would support, because I do think there are some things that need to be fleshed out. And I think it would also be good to provide an opportunity to have folks in the community ask questions of us, and provide feedback. And then we can apply that feedback to these direct pieces, which are certainly much more pertinent to what they would share with us. And I think doing this would, it would, it would give people clarity that this is the board's commitment, but at the same time, it, it provides time for people to plan. So that's what I support, that we approve a timeline that would approve the shells of the proposal, this, this document, basically, and then have the implementation of it, the use of it, the implementation, the pathways, the, the, all of that, have that be on our September agenda. That's what I support. I think that this is a solid, solid proposal, if we approach it the right way, so that's what I'm recommending. We've built incredible trust with the public now as a board. We've ebbed and flowed, and we've gone in and out of having the public trusting us, and they really trust us right now. And so it's, it's important that we think about this in a measured way, and, and I think that having it where we approve the one, have the sessions throughout the summer, provide people the opportunity to plan, and then vote on the transition of it in September, I feel that that's the best option. And I don't know how to make that as a motion, but...
We have a couple of board members that want to speak, and then we'll, we'll do a motion. Commissioner Harder?
Well, I like Commissioner Luganbill's proposal. I don't know exactly how, how it unfolds, if it unfolds, but I, I certainly would support that direction forward. You know, some of the reasons being, a lot of technical research, a lot of thought has gone into these boundary lines. It's a complicated issue. There are, I think, 11 guiding principles that the committee used to, to draw those lines. And I, I, as one board member, find it a little unlikely that we're going to get anything that's amazingly different from, you know, through public comment. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of, of setting the lines tonight. I do have some concerns about the pace that we roll this out, and, and the pathways, and grandfathering siblings, et cetera. You know exactly what that pace is. Personally, I, I wouldn't mind seeing an extra year of, of transition time. Other board members may feel differently, but I think the point is, we can talk about that over the next few weeks, and, and I would definitely be in favor of voting on, on those questions, again, in that first meeting in September.
Thank you. Commissioner Vu?
It may sound like I am indecisive, but the truth is, I like both ideas. The idea that we recognize the hard work of our committee, and all the criteria, the principle that they use to guide their decision-making, we trust them in the first place. That's why we delegate the job to the committee. And in a way, I want to vote tonight, reflecting the trust that we have in the committee, and it also gives the administration time to begin planning after tomorrow. to begin planning after tomorrow. But on the other hand, I can go along with the idea that we don't vote until September, for the reason being that this whole voting is going to benefit the community, the students, the parent. It's going to be, we are going to make a decision that have impact on students' life, not my life, not yours. So we need to allow community to help digest the information that we are about to make. A decision that is announced ahead of time and let people shine through their thought, their, their opportunity to embrace or to resist. And if that is the case, delay the voting until September would be the way to do it. To allow community a chance to resist or to embrace. We already had two sessions, actually three if you count the pack meeting, where community have a chance to come and have their input, a strong voice. And we had some speaker from previous presentation, school board meeting. And I also believe that those were just a few votes, a few voices. And those voices, I believe, were taken into account by our committee to a large extent. So my point is, I can go either way. However, I also want to make a immediate decision, and that is to not delay anybody's resource or time. I'm ready to move forward tonight with the recommendation of making a boundary change.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu. Commissioner Fager?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Luganbill for Policy and Governance, for listening to my suggestion about aligning boundary changes with the U.S. Census data. Maybe that's the little tiny legacy that I leave as I move on. I, I concur with what you just said, Commissioner Vu. I, I think, as, as somebody who likes to plan a lot, thank God, because they're, my house full of packing boxes, but I, I think we, we owe the community a decision about the fact that we're going to change the boundaries and then help the community make the necessary adjustments to move forward. And I don't know about you, but I prefer to have more information as early as possible in order to make those kinds of decisions. In addition to, to thanking all of the members of the demographic trends committee, I think we also owe some gratitude to the principals that came and spent an inordinate number of hours with us to share information, including doing a little bit of non-scientific surveying of the children in their schools. Their recommendations to pull off the Band-Aid and just move on was, was well taken. I think it's important to know that we spoke with busing and student transportation. And I think it's, the representatives from, from student transportation need to be thanked for the time that they spent in multiple evenings sharing their data with us so we could make a good decision to bring some equity to the children in our district. So I, I do think that we certainly did, to Charles' point, empower a committee to make some good decisions. And I think postponing things or delaying things longer, I mean, heck, we could start with next year's kindergarteners to high school and postpone change for nine years. I, I think we really need to make some decisions and let's move forward. And let's move forward, holding hands and, and sharing in the joy that is the Eau Claire School District, rather than, oh, let's wait till next year's fifth graders or the one, year after that or the year after that. I, I do agree with what Commissioner Luganbill said about the first two, first two proposals, but I do think I, I'm going to offer that bit of advice in addition to my little census piece, that waiting too long and postponing it to next year's first graders or whatever is, is just waiting too long. This is a decision that is a long time in coming and I think it's time for us to, to make some action and to help the community understand what the transition look like, looks like and why, and help make it a very smooth, positive operation for all children. Go ahead.
May I ask a clarifying question? When, when you refer to a transition plan, because I know that demographic and trends and facilities had talked a little bit about what a transition might look like, but in terms of that transition plan, wasn't that more about when the implementation would take place?
Yes, and I'm gonna, we'll tag team on this one. We, we made that suggestion about, yes, the implementation, beginning with neck, this fall seventh graders. So, the rising seventh grader. So the kids that would start in seventh grade in the fall of 2017 was, was our suggestion when, when we completed the work on this project.
Yeah, and while we, it was alluded to in the meetings, when we talk about a transition plan, we were talking about everything from communication to neighborhood engagement to that, kind of the blue gold beginnings type thing with the incoming students at a different school. So we didn't really get into those details. We wanted to leave all of that to the administration, but we did talk about it briefly as a committee.
So I think for, for the staff, it, it's very important to know what's meant by the word transition. Are we talking about transition activities for students who will be making the move to a different school? Or are we talking about transition in terms of implementation? When students will, will go? And I, I think I'm hearing two things.
I, I, I think we talked more about who would be affected than we did on the actual trends, transition process, because we felt that, and Wendy Sue Johnson is, is in the audience, the chair of the committee, we talked about which group of students it would affect, not on the transition plan, because we felt that that was the responsibility of this, of the principals and, and the administration in the district, not the decision of the committee.
Because as we've, as, you know, I've heard the conversation tonight, I've heard everything from who goes and when they go, to a whole series of activities about bringing the band out and giving out T-shirts and having information sessions. Those are two very different things.
Right. And I, I do believe that that was, it was more the former, Marion, than it was the latter. The, the latter, we, I mean, I, I was being facetious about the band. That was just my cheeky little comment and, but it really has to do with, we, we discussed that just very, very briefly, but really did feel as a committee that that was not our responsibility in terms of, of our church.
Well, and I'm just going to say one more thing, is that when we, when we reviewed our timeline last time in looking at whether or not you would vote early or later, we had a series of activities that had to do with the notification to families, the notification, to all families, the notification to families that would specifically be affected by any changes, meetings where people could come and, and get information about the transition. And then there would be some activities for students. I, I just want to make sure that we're not missing something else.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think that, that you're spot on. And Commissioner Luganbill just leaned in and told me that I was wrong on, on something I'd like to clarify. We, we did talk about incoming eighth graders, not seventh graders. So this year's eighth, the students that would, that would begin eighth grade this fall. That was, that was what we had recommended. So I, I apologize for my misstep.
Can I make a comment?
And I have a motion, just so you know.
Okay. I just want to make one quick comment, is I still have, you know, I think for the board to have this discussion, for me, it was important because it departmentalized the process. I was looking more big picture, because certainly I, I depend on other people for me to whittle things down. I'm a very big-picture thinker. But I still have a concern about the transition and the pieces that have to go with enrollment pathways and alternative school requests. So that'll be something we'll have to tackle, or where is that going to go?
Well, I, you know, I better train this on so you can hear me. You know, you, there had been some questions about that early on in the discussion. And Mr. Livin, who's not here tonight, had sent the board an email or a memo about suggested high school enrollment pathways and, and alternate school requests. And so the proposal was that in the event that the school board approved a change in the high school enrollment pathways for the affected neighborhoods at Sherman and/or Lakeshore, we would follow the same procedure that was implemented for open enrollment, students when Memorial was closed to open enrollment. And that procedure was detailed for you in another memo. Then, having to do with siblings, a sibling of a current, of a student currently enrolled at Memorial or in a school that feeds Memorial would be allowed to progress through the Memorial feeder elementary and middle schools. And then as related to alternate school requests, affected students who have a sibling currently or formerly enrolled at South Middle or Memorial High School might remain in the Memorial High School pathway, but all other students would be expected to follow the North High School pathway. Any exceptions would go through that alternate request policy. And that's really based on, I mean, there's very specific criteria in terms of students' IEPs, any kind of legal or court-imposed conditions, some documented medical circumstances. And those decisions are not made at the central office. Those decisions are made by the principals in the schools.
And I felt it was important to share that, because that's part of this discussion as well, and we've had a lot of questions on that.
And that was only a recommendation to, to mirror what we were doing with open enrollment.
So will that be, I'm sorry, will that be something then that we would work on or vote on?
I think you would have to vote on that.
Commissioner Harder?
So, but that would be something, if we follow Commissioner Luganbill's suggestion, that we would vote on later, right? Is that right?
Well, that's
If, if we follow, I mean, that was your suggestion, yes. That would be an example of something we would not vote on tonight. We'd vote on, yeah. And then about the, the recommendation, I know, understand it's just a recommendation, but my recollection of that is that the sort of sibling pathways stretch back all the way to kindergarten for that. And I, there was some concern about
And there was some concern about that. There was some concern with the open enrollment. And that's why I think the board would have to vote to determine how quickly you want to make that implementation for the boundary changes, because that will affect the number of students that attend North.
I know you want to make a motion, but I have one more question. So we will be working on that, but we will be having information sessions. We won't necessarily have those questions, be able to answer those questions.
No, and I think that, you know, going, and I can't remember which board member said this, but the idea of messaging, of having a clear message and being able to answer families' questions is, is a really important piece of this. And this is a decision that needs to be made sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Fager?
I, I did have a comment to, to that point. We did discuss the whole siblings piece and I, I think, I think the board needs to make some good decisions. If you have a kindergartner and a senior in high school, does the kindergartner follow the kid who went, who's a senior in high school? Is, is that really? Or there, there's a difference between somebody who's in kindergarten, somebody who's in twelfth grade, and somebody who's in ninth grade or tenth grade and twelfth grade. So I think I, I would advise you to make some good decisions, some reasonable decisions about that, because we're, we're not talking about carpooling here.
Can we call a question? Commissioner Luganbill?
I move that the Eau Claire School Board accepts the committee recommendations that all students north and west of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers attend North High School and all students south and east of the Chippewa and Eau Claire rivers attend Memorial High School, that the community input timeline be approved and that the board vote on September 11th regarding use of new boundary, enrollment pathways, and transition plan.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Dux?
Second. And I have the text of it. I can email Patty. Okay.
Patty, you want to take a roll call vote on that, please?
I'd really like to get
The whole number, the wordage. Okay, go ahead.
Let me just email to you.
I'm taking out the wordage.
The wordage?
And I just want to say, I, I think this is a way that we can honor a solid, basic proposal, move forward, but also provide opportunity for public input, Q and A sessions, provide administration time to plan, and give affected neighbors time to plan right away with the vote being in the first weeks of the school year.
I think it departmentalizes what we need to do, Amber.
Did you get it, Patty? Okay.
Good conversation, board.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Part of what Dr. Hartabett gave you was the transition plan for the information sessions. And I don't think you really addressed, with the information sessions, you won't have the answers to those questions before. So I just, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
But that was a concern I had. Yep. Do you want to?
I was just going to say, we do have, I mean, there are recommendations that are on the table for, for each of those that I think are pretty singular in every case. That at least provides a working, starting point for, for those discussions with the community.
We should be speaking while there's a motion on the floor.
No, there's discussion before you vote.
Okay, go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Oh, I don't need to discuss, sorry.
So again, I think, you know, in terms of being able to answer questions about if, if this vote passes, there are decisions that have not yet been made. So you may want to do, instead of information sessions, you may want to have listening sessions in terms of getting public input into the transition plan. That's a possibility. Or you could vote on the 24th to determine how you're going to do the transition.
Can I make a friendly amendment to my own motion?
Certainly.
Just to say, instead of community input, just say, community listening session timeline?
So does that change the tenor a little bit?
I think it does.
Okay.
I accept it, but I have a comment.
So instead of community input timeline, say, community information sessions, listening sessions?
Listening session timeline.
My, my comment is that it might help with our decision-making in September and help the administration as they make plans to, to learn if there are problems that we need to address. And that people can write to us, send emails, whatever their issues are. So we would have, be prepared with some of those issues that maybe we're not even thinking of.
Yeah, I think that's the change in the tenor of what we were going to do. I, I just think it was important conversation to departmentalize the pieces of the recommendations of the committee, have that conversation and how we were going to go ahead. That's the part I was having a hard time with, because I wanted to be able to have the information when we had the information sessions and we would not have had that information. So it's, if we've just switched it around a little better, that I think it's workable. Okay? Are we ready to vote?
We want to see the text of it.
See if I can get this.
I was trying to add capitalization here.
Take your time. This is important.
The only changes it'll say, community listening session.
Oh, I, I got that. I just wanted to capitalize, Eau Claire and Chippewa rivers. Okay. Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Our contact person for that. Based upon discussion, I just want to introduce this. At the June 5, 2000 school board meeting, wait a minute, I got to make sure I have the right thing here. Here we go. The Budget Development Committee of the school board had requested that staff who experienced a unique situation or were adversely affected by the salary schedule transition to please let them know. This was way back in March. Administration summarized the responses and worked with Budget Development Committee to decide what the next steps were. The committee wanted summary response to go to our staff in addition to individual responses to each employee that submitted information. We need to discuss the results of the responses, which you have been provided, and guidance to the administration for next steps. So that's our conversation on this one. So I'm going to open it up for discussion. Yeah, you want to go first?
I have, sure, I can. I have a short presentation, and some of it you just covered on what you talked about.
Did I?
Yeah, you did.
Thanks.
But just as a reminder, the data that we collected from that request that was in the district update was to have staff email their situation to us by the March 31st. And so we had 97 total communications that were received, 61 were from our certified staff, 32 were from hourly, and four were from non-affiliated. The themes that were shared in those letters were 86 were concerned about their placement on the salary schedule, there were four concerns related to additional certifications and licensure requirements, there were two comments that were non-salary related, two increased pay requests, one inequity, one longevity, and one title slash compensation change. Budget Development's answers to those items were that the overarching theme is due to placement on the salary schedule, which didn't surprise them. The committee is working hard to ensure concerns are understood and addressed. The ability to address many of these concerns are severely limited by budget constraints, and we wanted to send individual responses to those 97 emails that were received and were submitted concerns. We felt very important to respond individually to those people that reached out. A few of the themes that were brought up are being evaluated through the reclass process because some of those hourly positions and concerns were related to the reclass process. And then some of them have some ongoing discussion with Budget Development, and I think those are related to the additional certifications and requirements for licensure. So what we need is, we need the board to tell us, what are the next steps? We talked at Budget Development last week that there's a timing related to the liquidated damages, that's part of the employee handbook. If our certified staff doesn't provide resignation by a certain date, then there is a financial impact to them. If they put in their resignation over the summer, and so it was asked of Budget Development to bring to the board, should that be, should that period of time be extended for those people that reached out and had concerns related to compensation? So that would be one of our questions that we would need some guidance on. And they don't know what their next year's compensation is yet because the contracts are going at the end of June. And so again, the timing of how does that relate to the timing if they are considering resigning from the district? And then what is the timing of that response to the individuals that Budget Development had requested us to do? I know there's, we've been getting a lot of questions from people that have submitted requests, and nobody's heard anything, and so kind of we need directions on what would those next steps look like and what would the board like us to do? Questions for me?
Commissioner Luganbill?
Well, thank you. I definitely think we should provide a waiver with respect to the contract, but what do we, do we have to vote on that, or is that administrative? We do have to?
No, I would think you would have to vote on it because it's right in the employee handbook.
Okay. Are we in individually considered, we are?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So can that be a motion in and of itself, then, or is that along with the letter? Because I'm thinking that's a separate thing.
It is a separate issue.
Okay, well, I would move that we provide the waiver.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, two seconds. We'll take Jennifer Fager because it's your last meeting. You're welcome. Okay.
Oh, she has questions.
Go ahead.
So questions about what you just got done speaking about, is there a timeline to the, I mean, so depending on when the board communicates or gives the green light to communicate to employees, here's what is or is not happening with your response or your question to the board, how long after that is the board waiving liquidated damages? Is it like until the first day of school? Because that would be challenging to replace this.
I would think that, I mean, you would want at least a month before school would start. So is, I mean, August 1st, he gives folks a month and a half?
Commissioner Harder? I mean, I think that's, it's probably more than I had in mind, but I wouldn't object to it necessarily. But I think we were targeting end of school to have these responses back.
Right.
Which would have, really, that translates to a little more than a week, I think, if you do the math, between the 15th and the 6th. So month is a little longer than that, but.
Who seconded my motion? We have to friendly amend it, so what do we want to say?
I think I could offer a friendly amendment of two weeks from the time of our response.
That was going to be my question, is depending on, it's almost like the cart before the horse. So depending on what the board decides about next steps in terms of the timing of that communication, because if that timing doesn't happen until the next board meeting, which is July 24th, I mean, then you're already in August by the time that communication gets out.
My feeling is, sorry.
Can we leave it on the floor to have the other discussion first, please? And then maybe we can go back to it? Can we leave an open?
No.
I can pull my, I'll just pull my motion. We can wait. We can wait.
Okay. Pulled, withdrawn, let's have the discussion.
Could I just say?
Yes, go right ahead.
So, yeah, we've discussed this a bit. One point that I think is worth making is that one thing we can be pretty sure of is that it's not likely that anything is going to change with this year's salaries. So I think that's a definitive response that we can give immediately. The board may want to challenge me on that and say we should try, and then we can open that up. But my feeling is it's kind of, we've kind of passed the point where we can talk about changing salaries for the 17, 18 school year. So that could provide us an ability to give a very quick response that would be definitive, at least in terms of this year. And I think a key question then becomes, do we leave this question open in that response and say that however, we are continuing to investigate this question? Or do we say we have now concluded this investigation into this question? And I think it's a really important distinction. You know, the letters right now are worded in such a way that it's basically drawing everything to a conclusion. There are some points that we've discussed sort of late in the game that I think are worth considering if we talk about the option of leaving this open. And one of those points is when we, and I won't say we, because I wasn't here, but when the board voted on steps last summer, they were able to vote on one set of three different step options. The other two were left, I think explicitly, with the understanding that we would wait to see, one, what happened with the referendum, and, two, what happened with public comment. And my understanding is that the public comment came back and was very positively in favor of this since, and of course, the referendum also passed. But the question was not revisited. And so I think that would be a very big material impact to these 87, what was it, 84, 84 of 90 responses that were about where they were placed on the salary schedule directly addresses the vast majority of people who are expressing a concern with these individual responses. So I guess that's what I have to say about that for now.
Thank you for that summary. Commissioner Luganbill?
I, with the piece about separation options that we weren't able to provide at that time due to budget issues, do people feel like we need to, I guess, reconsider the question, just in terms of putting them on the agenda at a meeting to talk about it and vote on it again? Because it does seem to me like the board did at the time at least say that we were going to bring it before the board at a different time. So I mean, if we haven't never, if the board's never voted one way or the other, I'm just curious, do people feel like we need to do that, or?
Commissioner Dux?
My recollection is that we sat, we were told by our executive director that we could not afford that next piece, that we fixed one piece and we did not fix the other piece, and we were told we could not afford it. We had not passed a referendum. I think the referendum is still a question, unfortunately, and I would not be in favor of bringing it back for another vote at this time, unfortunately, that we couldn't fix all the problems involved with salaries. But I'd rather err on the side of being careful at this point.
I agree that as being fiscally responsible board, I understand where you're coming from, because that's something we deal with every single day as board members. But I think consistently since that time and through the referendum, that board members become more involved in budgets now because they have to, and because we are given less to work with, and we have to be so aware of what's in that budget. And I've thought since that vote and since that time, that we have $130 million budget, and to say that we have turned every stone, I do feel we need to have that discussion as a board and then vote on it. I think the discussion some of us have had is what is flexible in the budget? What are the pieces within the budget that we have a choice between doing the separation piece or what those other pieces might be? To me, when we went out for referendum and talked about what makes the biggest impact on learning for our kids and in our classroom, it's our staff. And so I really want to just put that out there to see if the, I mean, I would go to have a discussion that deeply about the budget to make sure that we overturned every stone. And it isn't because I don't know where you're coming from, because I do, I know that budget pretty well. And it isn't because someone didn't come up with it, I just, I just think the discussion has to be had, and maybe, you know, we will think outside of the box that we've never thought before, given that information. And I think that's the power of us together as a board and as our great administration. Okay? Mr. Luganbill?
I would just say, I do think we at some point have to reconsider it as a board, even if it's the inclination of most to vote it down. I think we at least owe it to the previous discussion. And maybe that speaks to something that sometimes happens in this board, where we should maybe maintain a live binder of things that we talk about in our board meetings that should maybe be followed up on, and we forget to follow up on them. Even if we have to vote them down, they deserve their day for a vote. And I feel with this particular issue, it's very important that we talk about it because as long as we do not act on that separation option, we are perpetuating an inequity that exists within this plan, within our salary plan and the schedule. So I, and if the board opts to vote to maintain that, then that's the board's prerogative. But I think it's important for the board to vote on that and to explain at that time and be transparent with the staff that this is why. And I do think the very real possibility, you mentioned, of this referendum being in jeopardy. Obviously, we have a lot of components right now that we're struggling with, but I do feel even with those considerations that we should at least have a discussion as a board. I think we owe it to the last board, a few different members, but pretty much the same.
Commissioner Dux?
And that's why it's here on the agenda tonight, but we may need to take more time as we prepare next year's budget. That's where it comes, where the discussion comes, not here at this moment, because the Budget Development Committee has spent many hours talking about this, trying to figure out what we can do.
I thank the Budget Committee for, Budget Development Committee for their hard work. And Commissioner Luganbill?
I just have a brief question about the reclassification process. If we could get an update on where that stands and, or maybe it's sitting, I don't know. But and what kind of the plan is, and if there would be something that, would it take effect in the 18, 19 school year, or just what are we looking at with that?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Marks.
So the reclass process is nearly finalized. We've had all of the committee meetings, and so then next steps are to cost out what each of the potential approvals of the reclass would be, and then bring that through the budget process with the board. So, I mean, the part of the committee work is done, now it's just, you know, asking Abby to get some numbers for us and then be able to present that information to the board through the budget process.
Do you expect, can I?
Go ahead.
Do you expect that that will be like a budget adjustment proposed, or that we will roll it into this next proposed budget?
I think that the, sorry, I think that the policy indicates that any approved reclasses would happen for July 1 of that next year, so that would mean the 17, 18 school year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? So does anybody have a motion off the floor on this?
So move.
We didn't have a motion yet.
I thought we were going to move that we adopt the letter the way it was presented by the Budget Committee.
Commissioner Harder?
Well, I guess, I think we have to decide whether the message of the letter is going to be one of finality or one of that we're going to continue the, you know, investigating this question and maybe even outlining specifically around this step that was missed last summer. There's another point, too, which is, I believe the letter should include something about the fact that there is, we do not expect any changes to the salary plan that is already under place, we don't expect that to change for the 17, 18 school year. And I think that's important to clarify, and that we could get that, you know, a version of that letter out very soon for the staff to see. And the question is really, I mean, I think, hopefully, we can all agree definitively that there's, we're not going to try to attempt a change for 17, 18 to any salary. Hopefully, that is something we could agree on. And then the question becomes, do we leave it open to, oh, by the way, but, yeah, there's no change coming, we don't know what will happen, but we are going to be investigating this question in these ways in the coming months.
Commissioner Luganbill?
I would agree with that language, and then I don't know, if we talk about the reclass piece for 17, 18, that would be retro, right? It would retroactively apply if we were to provide a reclassification to the 2017, 18 school year, right? Okay, so that would be the only exception I would add to that, is that that's, there would be no expected changes with the exception of any retroactive changes made due to our reclassification. That's all I would.
I think that's an important clarification. There's the difference of the people who are concerned about where they were placed during the transition is one set of individuals, and there were quite a few other responses about, yeah, these others that were beyond the 86. I think actually we have pretty good answers for a lot of these that aren't of the nature of, sorry, we can't help you. They're more in the nature of, well, these are already, we're already in the process of addressing this. So I think reclasses sort of falls in that category, too.
Can I just add one thing about the reclass? And so the, what the process had been and what the board had approved for the reclass process is that we would bring those changes when we presented the budget for 17, 18, and so the employees. And so the employees would already receive that new, that reclass effective with their first July paycheck, if they're a twelve-month employee, or their first September paycheck. And we would bring that through the budget process. And so there wouldn't be any retroactive payment because it would just start with their beginning salary because we would build the budget that way.
So, where are we? We need a, we need a motion on the floor defining this? Right?
We need a motion and we need a waiver too, depending on when we defend the board's request.
Commissioner Hader?
Yeah, I would move that we accept a variation on the, the letters that are on the table now, which would include a clarification on the seventeen, eighteen transition salary schedule not, not being on the table as being under consideration for change. But also that we would add to that, those letters, especially for the ones who were in that group of eighty-four, that we will be revisiting the question of the separation. We don't know how that's going to turn out. But that we will be revisiting it.
Is that sounddoable?
I didn't, I didn't hear the, the end of it. Revisit what?
Be revisiting the question of additional separation. That was left last summer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Fager. Any other questions?
I don't know, do we have, do we want to try to set a timeframe for that or just ASAP?
Well, that, I guess my one question would be, do you want to make a friend, do you want to modify the letter and then send it to me? Do you want us to modify the letter and send it to you? Because I just wondering how you would like us to, to move. I understand what you're asking. I just don't know if you want us to do it or if you would like to do it.
Whatever is easiest for, for you. I can, I can adjust it if you like or if you prefer to word it.
Okay, we'll work on it.
Sure. Great.
Okay. And then my only other clarification was, is it going to be ASAP? Or you're working on that part?
I think so too.
Okay.
Thank you. We're talking about a waiver? Four? Okay. So can we take a, can we, do you want to put a timeline on this?
We should.
As, as soon as possible?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's clear enough, actually.
Okay.
As soon as possible, but not before school start. Not in August.
Abby, what do you see, what's doable?
I would like to get them done now or as quickly as we could. I don't want to wait any longer because I know we're getting asked questions about response.
If I can get you a draft by end of day tomorrow, could we be on track for something?
By the end of the week?
Okay.
I think, I think we can make that happen.
Very good. Can we take a roll call vote on that then? Can you just look at this motion, just to be sure that's what you guys wanted, please? I think it, it's good. Way to go, Penny.
I have a motion about the waiver too. Oh, yep, sorry.
We have to vote first.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
Ready to vote? Okay. Commissioner Hader?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Another motion, Commissioner Luganville?
I move to approve the approval of liquidated damages for certified staff who elect to resign from the district as a result of the compensation letter response. And that waiver would be effective for two weeks after the receipt of the individual letters from the school board.
Sent to, did you send it to Abby?
Do you want it?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Luganville, second by Commissioner Duex. And we'll wait for a roll call vote. It's not coming through yet. There we go. I got her. Hang in there, Mass Committee. Okay. Let's see if I do this, if it'll pop up for you guys there. Commissioner Hader?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Boo?
Yes.
Commissioner Duex?
Yes.
Commissioner Fager?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle? Yes. Does that conclude this conversation?
Yes, it does.
Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
That moves us on to our school board application interviews and appointments. Would our two candidates like to come up to the front row, please? Thank you. So we have a, we have a policy that allows us to fill vacant board positions. You are all, you were required to fill out an application. We have Josh Clements and Lori Bicka. Thank you for being here. So we are going to give you each time for, to address the board. And then we'll open it for the board to ask some questions and then we will go to a ballot vote, vote. Okay? Anything else to add about the policy, Joe? Nope? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're going to, yeah, you're gonna come up and use the microphone. Should we pick straws to see who goes first or pick numbers? All right. I know what I'll do. Pick a number from one to ten. With six. So I guess, Josh, you're first. Yeah, there you go. That was pretty simple. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Wait till I get the timer up here.
Oh, yes, three minutes.
Three minutes. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Joshua Clements, two eighteen and a half McKinley Avenue here in beautiful Eau Claire. Good to see you all again. This fall, my daughter Doris will be in second grader at Lake Shore Elementary. And my son Aaron is, it's a freshman at Memorial. It hurts me a little bit to say that. Thanks for your inspiring and humbling support in April when I sought this appointment. It was an amazing group of engaged people and with your support, it added additional vigor to my interest in, in serving the community that we share. I do not intend to repeat my comments from that evening, but I'll briefly highlight my motivations, dedication, perspective I would bring to the tremendous capacities of this board. Community livability is my passion and my vocation. And I am enthusiastic about kids' education and community engagement. And that is why I'm here. Public schools are intimately linked with the communities as centers of learning. Employee residents connect people and provide lifelong skills for a successful life. Schools are the ultimate place-based institution focused on civic, long-term civic vitality. And public schools are perhaps the most important institution to the long-term vitality and condition of the community and its people. Due to the central, central role of public schools, I am driven to serving the district and supporting this integral mission. Again, professionally, I'm the city planner of City of Altoona, where my interests extend to the broadest definition of community development, public interest, governance, and general welfare. In April, we heard a great presentation about homelessness in the district. Just tonight, we heard a great deal about the boundary changes. And Commissioner Duex made an, an excellent observation about growth and change in the region. These are challenges which I'm intimately engaged on a daily basis. And I believe that I bring these expertise to the board and lend my insight. I am committed to prioritizing public education as the single most important public enterprise, deserving our resources, time, and other due consideration. And believe me, it's a challenging thing for a city planner to say that, because there's a lot of other things going on, for sure. But as Mr. Torres eloquently asserted a couple of months ago, education is a right. It's a fundamental need for a just and functional society. And that's, I think, what sets education apart from all other things that we do. Schools must embrace and be embraced for taking an active role in their neighborhood and the larger community. And I recognize that resources are not infinite, but public schools must be the easiest to justify. Again, I believe public schools are perhaps the most important institution to the long-term condition of the community and its people, and that history clearly reflects this. I bring a deep urgency and community perspective to the service of the school board. Thank you for your service to our children in the community and thank you once again for your consideration and support.
Thank you very much, Joshua. Lori?
So you'll, you may remember from my written application that I want to use this time to do, address my commitment to the district's strategic plan. I'll first say I'm aware that some constituents feel the board would benefit from having more non-educators. I am an educator and it's a title that I claim proudly. That said, there are other aspects of my identity that meet constituents' expressed needs. And I'll share these aspects as they relate to my abilities to advance the district's strategic plan. Goals one and two emphasize educating the whole child, academically, emotionally, and socially. I'm a research developmental psychologist, which means I study physical, cognitive, and social-emotional change across the lifespan. My professional life is entirely devoted to understanding the whole child. As a board member, a contribution I could make immediately would be to provide reports when information is needed for board deliberations. For example, I'm aware that Commissioner Luganville recently asked for a report about class sizes and using team teaching versus a teacher's aide. Of course, the more issues are rooted in psychology, the more useful I can be. So reducing implicit bias, effects of homelessness or foster care, and providing mental health services in schools. Also related to goals one and two, as a department chair, I led strategic planning efforts for my large unit. I've also been centrally involved with strategic planning at the university level, including taking leadership roles in the revision of our general education curriculum. I helped develop evidence-based innovative, innovative teaching models that were adopted as part of the new GE program. I co-authored learning outcomes and rubrics for assessing achievement. This work supports the university's accreditation standing in much the same way that board efforts can support our district's standing on state and federal accountability measures. My work as chair is also directly related to strategic goal three, which is high-quality staff. I have extensive experience with faculty and staff recruitment, hiring, and retention, specifically all aspects of contract negotiation, staff professional development, and responsibility for personnel evaluation. This is high-stakes work, given its direct impact on salary adjustments, tenure decisions, and promotion. In the end, I think my greatest contributions as a board member may be to goals four and five, collaborative cultures and family-community partnerships. I've worked with over a hundred and twenty public and private businesses and other organizations in the Chippewa Valley to ensure successful completion of student service projects. I've used my research expertise to enhance resources for schools, community agencies, and two different state departments of education. In Wisconsin, I worked with DPI and state legislators to secure millions in ongoing federal funding for program implementation for students most affected by food insecurity. As a department chair for my unit, in just five years and in a precarious state budget situation, I personally secured nearly thirty thousand dollars in salary increases for colleagues, salary and benefits for two new faculty positions, over seventy thousand dollars for psychology programs and facilities, and over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in federal funding for our autism clinic, a grant proposal I presented to Senator Cole that garnered his support. If you select me, know you'll have not only a fierce advocate for our students and staff, but also some with, with an established record that can help our district optimize returns on its investments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. Now we're gonna open it up for the board to ask questions. Commissioner Luganville?
My first question is basic, and I asked it at the last time we appointed folks, I guess on one person. What kind of time do you have available in your day? How flexible is your schedule? And how much could you commit to being on the board?
Well, I think with you went first, now we'll let Lori go first.
I feel like I have a realistic idea of the time period. I have a flexible schedule. It's a university professor. I am regularly dividing my time among different responsibilities, teaching, scholarship, service, it's a large component of my job, and academic advice. So a flexible schedule, realistic and comprehensive. So I am the director of my department, applying department to City of Altoona. So I largely dictate my own schedule. Other than, than standing meetings, internal predominantly, which are a few hours a week, my schedule is flexible. My meetings start early at six and go as late as nine or 10. This is not unusual for me. So I am generally pretty flexible about when committees are meeting or when there are meetings that need to happen. Obviously, like most people, the further out I know about them, the easier it is to work around it. But generally speaking, I'm quite flexible and nimble with when and where I need to meet.
Commissioner Hader?
Well, we don't have nine candidates, which is nice, but I can't see you guys have made it any easier for us tonight. I have been thinking since joining the school board about a number of issues, but one of them that comes to mind gives a chance to talk about something that I find interesting, which is, to some degree, of course, we've got the staff working for the district. And that's really the, the basic arrangement, is that the staff is working for the district. But from another perspective, the district works for the staff to create the right environment for them to be able to do their jobs properly. I'd be interested to hear your perspective on that dichotomy, those differences between those two perspectives.
I think it's a little bit of a cop-out, it says it both and. I think we both work for public institutions and kind of understand that there, there's an environment which, we're working for our employer, and in both cases, it is, it's our public. But also that the way that you have a great institution is you have great people working for it. And so that, that's a challenging position to be in where, whereby you're trying to manage a fixed budget, but also you're trying to nurture staff talent, you're trying to keep staff performing well, which generally means they want to be there or energize. And so I think that's an active concern, which there's not really a clear answer because there, there are many bosses, many inputs that, that this board has to balance. And the trick is trying to figure out between all decisions you make, how do we find that optimum place where we're responding to both our service mission to educate children, our commitment to taxpayers, but also from staff, making sure that we're doing right by that.
I agree. I, I think your, that your question is perhaps what I learned the most about in your, you as an administrator. And making a change from very competitive environments to truly cooperative and collaborative environments, to put others' needs always ahead of your own. And thinking about, I guess what matters most to me about your question is the way that, that district employees, that the board, for example, would serve the district's staff and students. Truly is a role of service, perhaps the most important one that anyone could ever have. And so I, I, I've had those experiences of being, of advocacy work, of garnering resources and seeing what that can do for your staff and for their students, their families, and the broader community. So I think that was a true- So I think that was a true, truly valuable primary lesson for me as I spent those years in administration. And I hope I will carry that forward in my orientation toward the board.
Thank you. Any other board members with a question? I have one. I didn't see your light on. Did you? Okay. You both have children in our school district and experience with that. I guess my question to you is, as you look as they go through our school, what are your dreams for them in public education?
In all honesty, my children, they plot their own dreams. My dreams for them, honestly, is to support their dreams. I guess I've thought more broadly about dreams for all children, more generally in the district. And that is for a rigorous academic experience for all children, a district that operates in a way that is equitable and inclusive, that prepares students, my own and everyone else's, for post-secondary education, for careers in what's a very multicultural and global world. Those would be my dreams for anyone's child.
Well, it's stated both my children are very different people. And so I enjoy seeing how this district, which is the third that my children have been in, that it meets them where they are. It helps them feel safe, and it helps them feel like they're included and they're part of a larger community. It equips them to chart their direction, whatever that direction is. And, you know, the teachers have been excellent in their various ways with both my kids in very different places in terms of their social development and interests. But both of them have found a welcoming community here. And I think that our goal is to make sure that every student feels welcome. And it's increasingly challenging as economic disparities are increasing and our district is becoming more diverse. And so that really challenges our staff and the board also to meet children where they are and to help equip them to where they want to go and to nurture their interests. And I can't think of a more difficult challenge than I've been so impressed thus far with my kids' experiences. And honestly, as a parent, getting regular feedback from the teachers has been super helpful because it's often, you take the kid to the bus, and you get him off the bus, and it's kind of a black box, you know? You ask your kids what they do at school, and it's like, oh, I don't know. So I really appreciate actually being more actively engaged by staff and administrators in this district compared to other places I've lived, to help me feel like I'm a little more participated, participating, hearing about what's going on in the classroom.
I don't really have a deep question for you, but just to get a comment maybe from you. And that is that most of us are surprised after we get on the school board and how it works. And we work more as a committee of the whole. If you weren't scared off by the meeting tonight, I'm surprised. Then you're tough. You can do this. But it's not, it's supposed to be apolitical, and it's supposed to be something that we work together until we can come into an agreement. So I guess if I ask you a question, would you be worried about that? Or do you feel you have your own agenda to bring forth? Would it bother you to work in a situation like that?
Personally, I think that's an optimal position to work in, speaking nothing of state or national politics, but I think as a municipal employee, working for a city council and working with a planning commission of both elected and appointed officials, when people come to it with their own backgrounds, yet they have certain things they like to see, or certain perspectives and expertise they bring, but generally, they're there because they want to make the community a better place. They may just be slightly different perspectives as to how do we get there. And I've really appreciated observing this council and towards how it's worked, and that you're having a conversation about, well, how do we do this in a collaborative way such that the students are best educated and our staff are well-supported? And for me, I share that perspective, is that I'm trying to encourage this and work towards this being as strong a district it can be, and then bringing my own background expertise into informing how do we make decisions and how do we get there.
For me, as a state employee, what I observed tonight is very familiar. And because you described kind of philosophically and your work orientation is what I experience on a day-to-day basis in my job. Tonight reminded me quite a bit about my experiences. I spent six years as an elected senator for the University of the Faculty Staff Senate at UW-Oklahoma, and I was the senator-at-large. And so I didn't represent my own department. I represented all faculty at the university. And I think in line with my work as the administrator that I spoke about, the idea of being able to put other needs, people who have other needs first, ahead of your own, collaboratively, cooperatively, in a set and environment. I've spent a lot of time with legislators from all different backgrounds and areas. And I'm reminded of that work. And sometimes faculty maybe think we're easier to get along with than politicians, but I'm not sure that that's actually true. So a lot of similarities in that the work you do is the very work that I want to be involved in.
Commissioner Fager.
It's a little awkward because you're picking my replacement here. But I did want to thank both of you for taking the time to put together your application documents. A little over a year ago, I sat in those seats thinking, wow, this is kind of overwhelming. But then, and went through a couple of election cycles, which were also extraordinary. And I guess for the record, Dr. Bega, I'm pro having an education person on this committee because we're all about education. And to that end, I really do support your application. And not to suggest, Josh, that you're not equally as interested, but I find that one of the enduring qualities that you have. And I hope that whoever we choose tonight has as much fun and as much opportunity to give back to the community that provides us all with an extraordinary school district and an extraordinary community. And I guess that really wasn't a question, it was just a comment for both of you. So thank you again for submitting your applications and your interest. And if you're not selected tonight, I hope you will look to the multiple opportunities that this district has to offer for people to volunteer their time and expertise, because there's a lot of good work to be done for a lot of good kids and a lot of good teachers and a lot of good staff members in this district. So thanks again.
Are we ready to vote? Commissioner Lugenville?
Oh, I just have one other question, because neither of you mentioned it tonight. But just could you talk to me a little bit about service to the community in the past for you? Whether it's a public or board or a nonprofit board, or what is your volunteer experience in the district? Just tell me a little bit about your service to the district and to the community.
I'm going to refer to things that I included in the written application. I think you feel free to ask me to elaborate. I think in terms of public committee work, I've been involved with a number of college-level and university-level committees. I think to kind of be closer to your question in terms of community focus, the years that I've spent working with United Way and using my expertise really to serve United Way-funded agencies that serve youth and family. And so I've worked as part of their assessment team, where I helped agencies to strengthen their programs, particularly developing assessment tools and using feedback loops to assess their program. And had a lot of contact with agencies, Boys and Girls Club, Scouting, The Y, Western Garrett Land. I've done a lot of work in schools, some of the things that I mentioned. It's typically, and I suppose what I would want to highlight is how I use my training and experiences to serve schools. Everything from evaluating programs within the schools. I was invited to evaluate backpack program at elementary level, providing weekend meals to children with food security. I have tutored at the elementary level, at the middle school level, especially for at-risk students. I've worked, I mentioned, work with the DPI to secure federal funding for all schools, all districts to apply in the state of Wisconsin for the twelve-year fresh fruit and vegetable program that supplements the school investment. And so those are the things that come to mind if you'd like me to elaborate on that too.
So I guess I'm a little bit of a serial involvement person, relatively new to O'Clare. So my current, I moved here a little over a year ago, which going back to a couple of months ago, why I didn't run for this opportunity when it was presented in the last election cycle. I currently serve on the City of O'Clare Transit Commission, which I've served for not quite a year, and I've been reappointed. Going back to previously, I lived in the state of Dubuque for a little over two years. And while I was there, I served on that city's planning commission for almost the entire two years I was there. I also was the president of the Dubuque Montessori School, which is a 501(c)(3) private, or public nonprofit school, served kids age two through kindergarten. I was elected president by that school board. I had 68 students. I directly hired and supervised our executive director, who was retiring after a very long career there. Going back even further, as resident of the city of Madison, I was involved with the regional planning effort that they launched in 2009 and right through 2012 over where and how growth was to proceed in that region of tremendous growth pressure and consequences. So wherever I've been, I've been involved in issues of growth and change, and wherever that's possible, education. And I see this opportunity as the best there is in terms of getting involved in supporting children in our community. And regardless of the outcome of this, I look forward to serving the district in some capacity.
Thank you very much for your answers. Well done.
Two votes for Joshua Clements with myself and Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, and four votes for Lori with Commissioner Fager, Commissioner Duex, Commissioner Harder, and Commissioner Rue. Congratulations.
Lori, if you could stay, I think we're going to do... Wait, can we do it now? Well, I don't know if we can, because we still have, Jennifer's still here, so. Yep. Thank you, Joshua.
Is Wendy Sue Johnson's water bottle over there where she was sitting? She just sent me a text. Okay, she said it was expensive. I don't... Okay, you have it? Okay.
So in our last board meeting, you received an update on our English language curriculum and ELA program. And I want to emphasize that our focus in terms of our growth model and in terms of preparation for post-secondary success and in equity is a strong focus on the foundational skills in ELA and in mathematics, because we know, the research tells us, is that if students perform well in these two areas and they have a strong foundation, then they're prepared to go on and to pursue other things, particularly in high school. So tonight, Sue Ayers and Dave Oldenburg are going to bring you up to date on what's been happening with the math program. You'll remember from our systems assessment, this was one of the stars in our crown, the math implementation. And the work that they have done is very, very solid. And it's going to be fun tonight to kind of show them off.
Thanks, Dr. Hardbeck. We'll get things started here, and then I'll let Sue carry much of the water here with a number of invited guests, so they can bring to light what pre-K-12 math literacy looks like in O'Clare. And math really is a literacy. And there may be some of the tonnage of the change of how math is instructed in 21st-century education here in O'Clare versus maybe some of the experiences that some of us had, where you were very much trained in how to solve problems, but it's building the literacy now and the instructional strategies that wrap around math to give it context and application in the field. We want math to be something that is dynamic, that cuts across the district. It's interdepartmental in its use, and it's another form of literacy. And that's the emphasis in the programming that you'll hear about tonight. And then also to build supports for folks that learn simply at different speeds. There's not students that are good at math or not good at math, that's antiquated thinking. There's students that access the literacy of math in different pacing as we see present in all our educational arenas. So we also then will review the O'Clare Area School District mathematic programming timelines, give you a little bit of history about how we get to the current reality, and then what next steps are. So with that, Ms. Ayers.
I just want to say hi. I'm really excited to be here tonight. I know it's late, but I'm excited that you asked about this, and I'm really proud of the work that our teachers and our kids are doing, and I'm just so happy to share that with you. This is the definition of mathematical literacy. And really, mathematical literacy is students being able to do and understand and apply the mathematics. And if you look at this definition, you'll see that word "solve" in here. And when we were in school, or many of us were in school, we probably spent the majority of our time on the solve. And that's where you might start feeling a shift when you go into our classrooms. Now we are developing this literate student in the area of mathematics, and we are trying to reach this school with all of our students. Of course, before children even come to us, the first teachers that they have are their parents. And so the beginning of numeracy actually begins at home. And by the time they come to our early learning program, they enter our program and they have this opportunity to have these very purposeful experiences in our early learning classrooms. And I love this quote from Doug Clements, who's actually a researcher in the area of early numeracy, and he spent time with our teachers this year. And the feedback from that experience with him was really powerful. But Doug Clements has developed these mathematical learning trajectories, which are these pathways that children take as they develop numeracy. And they fit nicely with the Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards that guide the work of our teachers in pre-K. of our teachers in pre-K. Once children enter our doors for kindergarten, then we start looking to the Wisconsin academic standards. And there are these special standards for mathematical practices that actually span K-12. And these really are tied to that idea of mathematical literacy. And this is what children do when they're demonstrating literacy in the area of mathematics. And we have had a lot of focus and emphasis at a number of our schools on the two that are highlighted. The first one is construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. And that is where children are talking and sharing and defending their work. And the other one that we spent a lot of time on for professional development and schools as part of their building goals is that attend to precision. And when we think about precision in math, it's not about the right answer, actually. The standard is about precision in language, and the models, and the visual representations that children use to communicate. And so you'll see a lot of evidence of that when we're in our classrooms today. Of course, how do we get there? So we saw what children will be doing to demonstrate mathematical literacy, but then this is what our instructors are doing to get them to that goal. And when you walk into a classroom now, you'll see teachers sharing those goals for the lesson. They're promoting that reasoning and problem solving. They're facilitating meaningful discourse, which is what our children will call math talk. You'll see children struggling with problems, but they know that that's okay. And you'll also see a lot of evidence of student thinking when you go into the classroom. And this is, again, it might feel different than the way that we experienced math when we were students. So besides the practices, of course, we also teach content in the area of math. And I like this visual, because it shows those big domains for mathematics, which are like the big headings or the big categories for math, and how they span across our grade levels. Some of them, like counting and cardinality, starts in kindergarten, and it's pretty much wrapping up by the beginning of first grades. Our children are really ready for that next step. You know, the other domain, like geometry, begins in kindergarten and it spans all the grade levels. So the children experience that domain of geometry all the way up through our high school courses. And then some of the domains, like number and operations in base ten, begin in kindergarten. And then they make a shift about third grade, when children are working on multiplication and division, and they start moving toward learning more about fractions that flows into the number system, and so on. So what our children experience in our schools is this really beautiful progression of learning that begins in pre-K and goes all the way up through high school. It's really interesting and fun to see their learning. So as part of our work, when we've been working on our program and doing program improvement, we've really focused on our collaborative teams. And there's this great quote that I just love that is from Tim Canold, and he's a real guru in the area of mathematics. And his quote is that "the grain size of change is through the teacher team." And I think that we really do believe that if we're going to see change, it's going to be through those collaborative teams of our teachers. And so we work on resources and provide support to our teachers so that they can have those conversations and do that learning with their team. So this is some of the work that we've done since we started doing our program review in 2011 and working forward. One of the things that I think has really been interesting and fascinating is that work around vocabulary and language. And we have EL teachers and our speech and language teachers that were actually part of our committee and continue to do work around the area of mathematics in partnership with our classroom teachers. We included special education, English language teachers, gifted and talented teachers, speech and language teachers, and support staff in our professional development over the last number of years. And this is the professional development, just some examples of some of the things that we've done. You can see our teachers here. These are teachers that participated in our math institute last summer and in a professional development offering we offered the year before on math discourse. But really, you know, we try to be responsive to the needs of our teachers, to the requests of our buildings, and to what is considered research and best practice in the area of math instruction. We are having another summer math institute this summer. Last year, seventy teachers attended. This year, we have about fifty-five teachers registered, and it's in the eighteenth and nineteenth. It's gonna be at North, and you're welcome to stop in and see our teachers if you'd like to talk to them and see them in action.
July.
July. Yep. And we start about eight-thirty, and we have an hour break between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty, and then we end about three-thirty in the afternoon. So, and this year, we have middle school teachers joining us, too. So how do we help our children get to that high goal of mathematical literacy? And this is where you'll feel, it will feel different when you go into a classroom. These are what we might call norms for our mathematics classrooms, and they come from the work of Joel Bowler and Duex from Stanford University. But they are these beliefs that we want our children to believe about themselves as learners. Everyone can learn math to the highest levels. Math isn't just for some people. We don't have some people that have a math brain and some people that don't have a math brain. It's all. And I think that might be different. That's a shift. We know that mistakes are valuable. In fact, we celebrate mistakes, and we look at them and we try to learn from them. And we know that mistakes are okay. In fact, that's part of learning. We also know that questions are important, and children learn that if they don't understand something, they need to be asking all the time. Do I understand that? Do I need to ask more questions for clarification? Math is also about creativity and making sense. And, you know, our children explore those patterns that are present in mathematics, and they make drawings and visual representations to communicate those patterns. We also know that math is about connections and communicating, and you will see this when you go into our classrooms. And communicating is not just the verbal communication that we use, it's written communication. Children are using graphs, and they're using drawings, and they're making models to express their thinking. And that's really interesting to sit down with a group of kindergarteners and ask them to explain their drawings. Depth is much more important than speed, and we talk to our children about how some of our greatest mathematicians think very slowly and very deeply, and that it's not all about being fast. And we also want our children to know that math is a growth subject. Sometimes it's hard. Sometimes we have a little productive struggle along the way, but that's part of learning, and that it takes time to learn. And so these norms are very important, and this is, we should have your children talking about this when they're learning in their classrooms. So we have a special surprise for you tonight, and you are going to have a special premiere. And this is a result of a project that one of our schools was involved in, and we have special guests here. We don't want it to start quite yet, though. The project was, we created some videos at one of our schools, Putnam Heights. The publisher of our elementary math program... Uh-oh. Don't say that. It's okay, we'll get it.
Keep talking.
Keep talking. So the publisher of our elementary math program approached us because they saw that our students were showing good growth in math. They also heard about the work that we had been doing with engagement and math discourse, and they wanted to capture our teachers in action. So they made actually seven videos in kindergarten through a sixth-grade video, actually, that we shot, that will be used as professional development videos across our country and possibly further than that. And they feature our teachers and our students. As part of that project, they provided us with the video that we own now, and this is something that we can use with our community and our public, so that you get to see it. This is the premiere tonight, and we have some special guests here that we'll introduce to you later, okay? And they haven't seen it either, by the way, so this is new to everybody. So they're nervous, yeah.
The Eau Claire School District serves about eleven thousand five hundred students, pre-K through twelfth grade. When students study math now, what we're really looking for is a depth of understanding. It's not that we don't believe the answer is important, but what's important also is their understanding of the structure of problems, their ability to represent that problem in multiple ways, and be flexible in the way that they solve the problem, and also to be able to explain their thinking to others.
It looks a little different than a traditional math class. The teacher will be standing at the board, and then the students will be standing at the board, and we do that to deepen their understanding and so that they have a chance to explain their thinking, because we know that when students explain their thinking, it will help them understand the concepts that we are learning. If they make an error, help other students analyze their work so that they can also work on their math talk and their understanding of the math concept that we're teaching.
What do we say about these?
Those were extra ones.
There's more depth in the math understanding and the development of number sense, which I see as a benefit of this math program.
What we're working to do is give children a toolkit of strategies, or tools, or flexible thinking, so that when they face a new problem in another grade level, they can go back into that toolkit and think, I wonder what would happen if I tried this tool on it? And try to solve the problem that way.
So your first step will be to work with your partner.
In math class, it really challenged me to actually think about it instead of just like saying like right away that this is the answer.
It's less than six, but it's higher than three.
I'm really helping my students understand the material. Math is no longer a subject of teaching procedures and learning rules. They understand why those rules work and are then able to apply that to their work.
If there's a certain problem that people don't get, we do math talk to figure it out, so we can compare and share our thoughts, and the dots would all be along the same line.
We learn a lot by listening to students and listening to students share their thinking.
Today, if you walk into my math class, my students are engaged, they're talking to each other, they're looking at various ways of solving problems. We're making good math thinkers.
We really want to prepare students for what they'll be doing once they're finished with school. Those important skills that employers are looking for, being able to work on a team, being able to problem solve, being flexible in their thinking, and hope that those skills will transfer into other areas once they're adults.
It's just so exciting to see them light up and get excited and feel successful and feel like, I can do this, I know I can. And then they do it, and they show us that their little bodies are capable of so much more than we ever thought they were.
My parents think the same thing as me, like I'm proud of myself, they're proud of me because I've grown so much.
When you see them learn and grow and become people who are suddenly productive members of the community, who I would trust with my health care, who I would trust with educating my own children, it's quite fulfilling to see that the Eau Claire School District was a part of that.
So you might recognize a few of these famous people now that are in our audience. These are our teachers and our students from Putnam Heights. Not everyone is here. Couple of teachers couldn't make it. And then Kim, the principal, actually is visiting colleges with her daughter right now, but she wishes she was here. And I think she's live streaming right now, so we can all say, hi!
Hi, Kim, yeah.
But we were proud of the work they did, and it was a great project. And I don't know if you have any questions for them. We do have a little bit more to share. Should we do that at the end, or would you like to talk?
Yeah, we can do them at the end.
Okay, okay. So, how do I get out of this? Just down here? Okay. So up to this point, starting in about 2011, we've had three different groups of teachers looking at their program and working on program improvement, early learning. We had a kindergarten through grade eight group, and then the high school. And basically, they were all working on similar pieces of their program, you know, looking at the standards, reviewing their program, looking at student achievement. They all did a study of best practice and research about learning mathematics and instruction. We had curriculum revision, developing common assessments, and then updating their instructional resources. And as part of the professional development, we included our administrators, our classroom teachers, and our resource teachers, and we've provided special offerings for our support staff, too.
And next steps here, looking forward. The district is going to engage in a small group pilot of updated materials and math expressions throughout the district. We've been asked to pilot some materials that will be new or launched in the field here in Eau Claire next year. And then we've expanded resources in assessment, intervention, and district support for students in special education. Again, reinforcing that inclusion and universal aspect of math for all students. And then high school math is continuing to deepen their staff development in college preparatory math, CPM math, rolled out several years ago in the high school, reflecting many things that we've talked about here tonight. And in the future, we will embark in a pre-K-12 core program review. That's a project that, as the Literacy Project moves forward, then we'll begin on a pre-K-12 math review, understanding that we're in a pretty good place, so. I realize you'd like to talk to me quite a bit, but I'd like to defer that and turn that to our experts here from our students and from Putnam Heights and our staff, and give the board a chance to interact with our stars, so. Chris, I know you had some questions.
I didn't have a question, but I'd like everybody out there to introduce themselves to the board, because I know some of you, but not all of you. And if there's parents out there with their children, you are just as important as anyone else, so just introduce yourself to the board. Would you do that for us, please?
I just want to thank you, too, for being here and for staying this late. I know this is past your bedtime, probably, so this is fun, right? Really, truly, great job, and I'll need all of your autographs before you go. And to congratulate you all, great video. I hope we can get more videos like this up on our website. Fantastic.
I would like to actually make a quick comment about that. This is a condensed video, the overall program. There are other videos that were created that are, they're a bit longer, about eight minutes apiece, I think, and let you dig into, and I remember watching Charlie's, it lets you dig in a little bit deeper into a class lesson. And it really is a wonderful example of engagement. I mean, these kids are just really, really drawn into the excitement of mathematics through the design. And so we are going to make these available on our website. One of the things that is also good to know is that there was actually no financial cost to the district. The publisher of math expressions, we did a partnership with them, and they, we, these same students and some of our staff are actually through releases. Proper releases are also part of now their materials that they use to help train other staff. And in exchange, they created some of these videos for us at no financial cost, other than the soft costs of Sue running around and really coordinating, spending a lot of time with us, which was really quite significant. I also really want to make one last comment, that two weeks ago, you saw the Literacy Project. And so one might wonder, how does, you know, we don't simply ignore our other programming at the same time. And so on the background, while trying to make sure it doesn't feel like another thing to our staff, Sue's done a lot of work in the background to make sure that the mathematics... to our staff, Sue's done a lot of work in the background to make sure that the mathematics program is still vibrant and really prepared for the next generation of a program review in that time takes, is ready. So, kudos to Sue for that work, because it's been quite significant and done on a very, very under-the-radar type of a thing, so it doesn't feel like it's being done to staff, it's done with staff, and it's really done in a very, very appropriate way.
Commissioner Harder.
Thanks, Jim. I'm glad you mentioned the ELA tie-in there, because I was wondering about that. And to that point, just about the general scope, and as Mathematics Expressions is the name of the...
So, at the elementary, well, at the early learning, we have Bright Beginnings. Or no, hold on, I'm losing my, Sue worked with me, Building Box, I knew there's a lot of Bs, Building Box, thank you, Sue. Math Expressions at the elementary, big ideas at the middle school, and College Preparatory Mathematics at the high school. One of the advantages is also, now that the teaching and learning has a pre-K-12 scope, is really a lot of Sue's work, and Dave is trying to tie those strings together between the different levels, so we have continuity of programming.
And so, and I apologize if you said it, but I may be a little brain-dead from the hours here, but, so this is currently, what is the scope of it currently in terms of its deployment? Is it really just Putnam, and what is the planned scope?
Yep, so the current, actually, we have, each of these programs are in place, and really, we're, and as Dave mentioned a little bit, we are continuing program evolution, but on a very small scale, so we are beginning to pilot some materials at the elementary level next year. And again, that will lead us into a pre-K-12. This is some exploratory work, we're doing it at each school, each elementary school, a very small number of staff involved in this, and then we will expand that again to the middle and high school as well, but we're getting, growing that, like, we don't want to overwhelm our staff with the Literacy Project going on, so we're really trying to do this with some people that are sort of our math leaders right now, that are already deeply invested in this project, in this work.
Makes sense, thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any other...
Let's one say one more thing.
Go ahead. So I just have to say one more thing. So, two things. One is a fun thing, and one is, yeah, one is a serious thing. And the serious thing is that Putnam Heights incorporated a certain percentage of time in their math classes that was devoted to math talk as a strategy for improving math performance, and so it's been fun to see how they have implemented that expectation of math talk. The second thing is that some of the joys of being a superintendent is that you often get invited to celebrations, and I got invited to Putnam's celebration of their completion of these videos, and they had made another video of their participation in the video, so maybe at some time, they'll roll that out for you privately. I just personally, as chair of the board, want to thank you for your hard work. When I think about math talk, I always think about self-talk, and I go way back to the beginning, and how important that is just for cognitive development, and how that's being done now, pre-K-12, it's like I could jump up and down and scream and yell, I'm so excited. So, thank you for your very, very hard, hard work. Thanks, Putnam Heights. Yeah, and it's too bad it's summer, I should have brought cookies. We usually have cookies, and we don't have them tonight, so, sorry. We have one thing left on the agenda, and thanks again. We have one thing left on the agenda, and that's the ECASD Employee Assistance Program. And I think Kay's up for that one, right, Kay? There you are. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so, just a couple of minutes for everybody related to the school district's employee achievement program. So, back in 2012, you know, it's kind of interesting, because I listened to Erin's conversation with the board member candidates, and I had written down that Erin talked about the fact that the district works for the staff to create favorable work environments, or something to that sort, and I thought, here's a prime example of what the district does to be able to work for the staff. So, again, back in 2012, when I came into the district, we were in search for a new, at that point, Employee Assistance Program, an EAP. So, this language in the next couple of slides is exactly what was sent out to potential EAP providers in our RFP, in our request for proposal. So you can see that it indicated that the district was interested in an organization that would actively participate in the development and implementation of strategies that are not traditionally associated with an EAP. So we wanted something unique and unusual, to be able to provide some pretty proactive things for our employees. So there's a bulleted list there of things that we specifically talked, or indicated that we're looking for, proactive strategies, life skills coaching, direct involvement with injury management, because we had some concerns about our workers' comp claims, specifically about crisis intervention for our employees, training, and then wellness program involvement. Additionally, we had indicated in that RFP that we are interested in an organization that possesses the flexibility and resources to commit to achieving a new level of performance for an EAP. Again, something unique and different. And that this will mean that such an organization will have the capacity for strong local presence in order to work directly with administration in the development of those strategies, and then directly with employees in terms of its implementation. So, we were asking for a lot, and I know that, because as we met with different providers, very few were even coming close to even following what we were looking for. However, we were successful in finding Real Living, and Real Living is our current employee achievement provider, so it's still an EAP, but there's a difference between employee assistance program and an employee achievement program. And a lot of that had to do with the fact that we were really looking for something to be proactive versus reactive. I'm sure everybody's worked in different organizations where they have an EAP, and in most cases, you kind of wait till the wheels fall off for an employee, and everything is in crisis, and then you reach out to the EAP and say, "We need your help." In this case, we were looking for somebody who we could partner with to be able to say, "Let's try to create things along that route, so that we don't get to the point that the wheels have fallen off for employees," and we're more proactive in that approach. So we found that, again, back in 2012, with Real Living, and they were a local provider, so we have direct access to them immediately for so many things, and it's been extremely Here's just kind of a laundry list of different things that Real Living provides for us. Obviously, different trainings, and this is available to all employees. So there's a variety of different things that, oops, I touched nothing. There we go. Thank you, Patty. A variety of different things that our employees can partake in, in terms of that professional coaching component versus a professional counseling component. So there's, like I said, a list of things that they've provided for us over the years. We have a wellness newsletter, both a monthly component and a weekly component, that we get and publish to employees in both of those time periods. We have a Champions of People newsletter that's provided directly to our employees who manage or supervise other people, and how we can be a champion for those people that we supervise and oversee. There's a quarterly Real Living magazine, which is phenomenal and has resources that you can't even imagine. Obviously, a wide variety of brochure topics, if you ever walk around the corner down here, outside the HR office, it's all out in the hallway for everybody to see and have direct access to, plus it's available in the buildings. We have a financial and legal resources component to our EAP, the coaching and counseling that I already talked about. There's a newsletter that's specifically written for school district staff, that pertains to things that everybody in our organization works with on a regular basis, and we share that in the district update with employees. We get annually six free tickets to the Real Living Be Your Best Conference, which is held at Florian Gardens, and each year, we kind of go through and select different employees to participate in that, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us. We get a free add-in at Quarterly Magazine, and of course, they provide us with crisis response services. So when we look at the EAP utilization, we've charted out here our utilization from 2012 through 2016. 2012, when we developed the partnership with Real Living, it wasn't right away at the beginning of the year, so that 8% is with only a portion of that calendar year. It was also when Act 10 was very hot and heavy, so there wasn't a big surprise to us when we looked at the data, that 8% utilization happened in less than a full calendar year. You can see it kind of dipped off a little bit in 1314, as things started to come down a little bit, and then again in 1516, it was much more focused on that preventative proactive approach, and you can see that we're almost at 9% in last school year. Industry standard for an EAP utilization is 3% to 5%. So you can see that our employees are utilizing the services that we provide to them way above what the industry standard would be. We talked a little bit earlier about coaching versus counseling, and you can see here the breakdown between the coaching and counseling components. So that traditional kind of counseling piece that EAPs provide to people, what we're doing is we're trying to get people in for that component earlier than what they would have been previously, by communicating that these are available. That whole achievement versus assistance part, I think, kind of helps with that stigma about an EAP, and people don't see this as, "Oh geez, I've done something wrong, or something isn't right, so I have to go to the EAP." It's, "Oh my gosh, look at what they're offering, and I can improve whatever skills I need." So this has been extremely beneficial for our employees. In addition to that, we have contracted with Real Living to provide another component for our employees, and this is what they call the trifecta services. So this has to do directly with our workers' comp injuries. So, when an employee in the district gets hurt, they have access to a 24/7 call line to report their injury, and when they call, they're directly, or immediately directed to a triage nurse, who helps them figure out what they need to do next. Is it something that requires medical attention? Is it something that the nurse can give them direction to take care of at home, and see how things are in a day or two? So they have that immediate contact with the nurse triage line. A couple days after they make that phone call, the employee will get an additional phone call from Real Living's best management. And what that is, is somebody from our EAP provider reaches out to our injured employee and talks to them about things going on around the injury, whether that's the medical component, whether that's paperwork for our workers' comp claims, whether that's what's going on in my life that caused me to end up with an injury in the first place, and how do I feel about my workplace, and my boss, and my colleagues, and my coworkers. The best management component of the trifecta services is phenomenal, in terms of reaching out to employees who are injured and helping them feel connected to the district to get well faster and to get back to work as soon as possible without risking additional injury. What we hear from employees is that it allows them an opportunity to talk with a third-party, non-subjective person about what's going on with them, and in that call, if there's something that the Real Living employee hears that kind of sends off a red flag for them, then they offer up additional EAP services for the employee to help them with whatever else is going on with them. As of the end of 2016, we had 101 best management conversations that occurred between our employees and our Real Living trifecta services. So the trifecta, just kind of in a nutshell, the hypothesis for this was that engaged, balanced, healthy, and well-employees are less likely to be injured and are more likely to recover quickly if they are injured. This is kind of a price take associated with that. So you can see, we start at 2012, and prior to 2012, for any of you who are on the board, we were kind of in a really bad spot in the district in terms of our workers' comp claims. We were at the verge of being dropped from our provider and being thrown into what they call the pool, and that's not a great swimming pool. The pool is somewhere you don't want to go for workers' comp, and we were on the verge of that, and we needed to come up with a plan to fix things. And engaging with the trifecta program was something that we had promised our new provider that we would look to do, to be able to provide supports for our employees, and we did that in 2014. So you can see that the incidence and the price takes associated with those incidents has greatly decreased since we moved to the trifecta program. Trifecta involves three specific components, obviously, from the tri component of the title. It involves, to have a successful trifecta, you have to have the EAP that's in place. It's got to be the first report and nurse triage component, but there's a lot of EAPs that have that. But what it makes it special from our end is the best management phone call and relationship that is developed with our employees who wind up getting injured. Employee feedback overall about either trifecta or the EAP services, you can read here that this is, I think, one of three that I'm sharing with you, but they consider it an additional support for our employees. And the insurer's typically not the empathetic ear, you know, the insurance company isn't going to be like, "Oh, so tell me about how things are going and why you wound up getting injured." And the employer has their own concerns, and so this came from an employee, and I don't disagree with any of it, but the EAP is a third-neutral party, and they really appreciate that, because it makes the process, look at the whole employee, and then it provides them additional supports moving forward. Additionally, from employee feedback, they indicate that best management can identify other issues that employees having, and encourage them to reach out to the appropriate people, whether it's somebody in my office, somewhere in management, or other EAP supports that we provide. And then employees can call back to trifecta with concerns, or to speak to the nurse if something else comes up, and that helps us to reduce doctors' visits. It's a two-way communication, once that first call is made, to the triage line. And then trifecta best managers provide support to our employees by handling touchy or difficult conversations and situations. And they do an excellent job with this, and we've received a lot of positive feedback, as you can see, from our employees. So there you go. Any questions about our employee achievement program, and what's offered to our employees?
Commissioner Luganbill?
Well, thanks for the presentation. I've heard great things about Real Living. I'm just curious, what is the timeline in terms of when they'll be up for renewal from the board?
We renew our contract with them every year.
Okay, we do.
Mm-hmm, yep. And each year, I sit down with the executive director of Real Living, and, I mean, we've been at this now for four years, and so I always assume, when I sit down for that conversation, that that's going to be, "All right, Kay, you guys really use us a lot, so we need to increase the cost." And I just had the conversation last week, and we are staying right where we were in the beginning price of 2012, so...
That's amazing. So, can I ask the difference in the lowering of the workman's comp and what we pay for Real Living? Is there a positive...
Oh, yes, we're still, yep, we're to the positive a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Based upon the workers' comp claims that we had prior to moving to the trifecta, yes.
Okay, so that, to me, maybe there's some flexibility there.
And just like to add to, can you flip back to that slide when we didn't have the trifecta? Yep, oh, that one right there, yep. So when they do our workers' comp and our renewal, it's always based upon a three-year average, and so we're really excited. I'm really excited this year, because that really bad year drops off this year, and so our insurance company is telling us to expect some drop-in premiums for that workers' comp piece, because we have put this program into place, and I know that it's very well-recognized from our insurance company, and they're talking to other districts about it as well, so...
Excellent.
This year, we received our first dividend back from the workers' comp program, I think, since I first got here, and it was like just over $50,000. I mean, it hasn't been, we haven't received the dividend back like a normal organization would based upon claims, so there is great improvement being shown in this.
Commissioner Vu?
I have three things. First of all, thank you for doing this, is a way for the district to be looking at reducing costs for the district. Secondly, I believe the base data are working right. What are the new goals that you may be setting for increasing the user percentage, and also the satisfaction, for example, the 100 people that communicate to you? And third, how are you going to, or maybe what, are you going to communicate this information, if you haven't already, to the district employees, so that they are on the same page, that this is for their interests, also?
Okay, so I think the second question was, how are we going to continue to spread the word about the fact that this is available to employees? Is that correct?
And that is helpful.
Right. So, in the district update, which goes out on a weekly basis, in the HR section of that, we have a section within the HR section that's called the holistic corner, and each week, we have information in the holistic corner related to either insurance things, wellness things, something that helps employees know holistically what's available for them, and how they can help to become a more holistic, healthy employee. So in that communication, there's routine information that gets published on a weekly basis about services and opportunities that Real Living provides, and so that happens on a weekly basis. In the meeting that I had last week with the executive director from Real Living, we talked specifically about having their crew come in and work with our principals. We've done this in the past, but we've got a lot new, we've got more, what's the word I'm looking for? We have new principals in those positions that wouldn't have heard the original, "Here's what we can do for you, and here's what we can offer." And I think if you talk to principals who've worked directly with Real Living... And I think if you talk to principals who've worked directly with Real Living, I think that they'd say very positive things, and the fact that they've got that direct one-on-one relationship with somebody at Real Living helps them to think, oh my gosh, I can call Real Living, and they'll be able to help with this. So that's another one of the things that we're looking to do, is to get them specifically lined up with our principals, so that we can continue to promote and publicize what this service does for our employees. Did I get them all?
What is your thought about increasing the numbers, the data?
For a higher utilization of the services?
Correct.
Well, again, it would be getting Real Living in front of our principals, who have direct contact with our employees, as well as our, our directors like Building Services and Food and Nutrition. In addition to that, the EAP provider has a chair in the holistic committee. So holistic committee is made up of insurance, insurance people, administration, the clinic people, our, our district wellness, our insurance wellness, workers' comp, and Real Living. And so we set goals, we look at data that we collect from employees through what we ask them to do with our insurance steps, and we use that data to create goals for the next year. What is it that we need to work on? So for an example, in one of the years, the data indicated that as, as a whole staff, no, not anybody specific, but as a whole staff, we are anxious and depressed and overweight. Those are like the three biggies. So then, that group sits around, and we look at, how can we develop a holistic approach to improving those things for employees, and what kind of services can we provide? So everybody around that table comes from a different lens, but they all have the same result, and that's improving employee wellness. So that's another component of being able to do that. We set a, a vision and a mission for the holistic committee, so that we can always go back to what is our purpose, and Real Living is a key player in all of that.
Commissioner Luganbill?
My, is this open to part-time, full-time, summer, what?
Yep.
Any and everybody?
Everybody employed in the district, as well as their immediate family members. So like, my husband wouldn't be able to go and get professional coaching on, you know, how to be better organized, or how to manage his time better, which I would personally love, but when it comes to the actual counseling components, all of that's available to immediate family members.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thanks, Kay.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So that brings us to our request for future agenda items. Anyone?
Commissioner Fager?
Would you mind if I said a couple things?
I don't mind.
I just wanted to, before I end this evening, to thank everybody in the district, especially Jim, and Abby, and Kay, and especially Mary Ann, for making this a really incredible experience. I, the board, you, you guys are awesome, too, but, that's not really a but, and, and I've said that before, but I really wanted to acknowledge the, the assistance that you all gave me to make this job, which is a big job, a little bit easier. So thank you so much. And Mary Ann, I've never worked with a more talented administrator than you, and I hope that I take a little bit of the lessons that I've learned from you and your skill in leading the district to my next career. And Lori, yep, we're always here this late, it just doesn't matter. It was 11, past 11 o'clock during the referendum meeting, so caffeine, and usually, Herbert and Gerbert, so just so you know, get used to that, and welcome. I, I think, I think you're going to have as equally a wonderful experience as I've had, and, and Joe, and Erin, and, and Chris, and Catherine, and Charles. Thanks for making this fun trip.
Thank you for your service. We thank you, and Eau Claire thanks you.
Commissioner Luganbill?
I just want to remind that we have the resolutions to sign, so people can't leave until we do that. I don't know where they are, but.
So we will adjourn the meeting, but we won't get up right away, because we have to get an agenda-setting meeting, right? So would I take a motion to conclude our meeting this evening?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Vu. Second, by Commissioner Fager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, so.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.